Okay. I'm calling to order the Tuesday, October 22 meeting of the Planning Commission for Corder Madera. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Thank you very much. Would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Metcalfe.
Here.
Commissioner Bundy. Commissioner Chase.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
And Commissioner Bendel.
Four to five.
And the record will show that Commissioner Bundy is absent this evening.
Thank you. At this point in every meeting, we open the meeting to a public comment for something that is not on tonight's agenda. So if you have something to say to the commission that's not on this agenda tonight, please step up to the microphone. You would have three minutes to speak. So it's not on tonight's agenda. So, all right then, we have no takers. So we will move right on to our public hearing elements. We are considering to swap the items on tonight's agenda with the dog park first and the ADU second. So by a show of hands, who's here to talk about the dog park? Okay. It's about 50/50. And we have some live dog outside to speak, so I think that we will switch that if that's okay. Commissioners, are you all right with that? Okay. So we will do that. We will go with the dog park first. So with that said, I'll introduce this item. Corder Madera Dog Park Design Review and Conditional Use Permit Application for a .37 acre off-leash dog park at the southeastern corner of Corder Madera's Town Park, 498 Tamalpais Drive. Mr. Boyle is going to make the presentation tonight about the dog park. Please, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Jason, members of the commission, member of the public. The item before you is design review and conditional use permit for a dog park within Corder Madera's Town Park. I do want to bring to your attention at places and also at the back, two emails that arrived today from citizens expressing their opinions regarding the dog park. So those items are at your places. And I believe one of the emails, one of the authors is here to speak in addition to the email. So I'll give you a brief overview of the process that has transpired to date regarding the creation of both Town Park and the dog park. Proposed location, there were a number of locations considered, and this is the location that the Town Council directed staff to bring to you. This location is just north of Town Madera Center, I'm sorry, Park Madera Center, pet club just to the south, and the location there is in the yellow polygon. The proposed site plan is a relatively simple site plan, and I'll go into detail of what elements will be proposed for the dog park in just a moment. Quick history of the development of Town Park itself. The initial purchase of land for Town Park was way back in 1939. First master plan was in 1964, and we formed the Parks and Recs Department back in 1970. The current master plan for Town Park was adopted in 2007. And a little bit brief summary on the process and development of the dog park to date is, again, back in 2007, around the same time as that master plan, there was a survey done of all citizens in Corder Madera who were able to take it and asking them what type of uses do they enjoy at Town Park. And a dog park itself was not mentioned, but there was quite a number of people, and as I mentioned in the staff report, who indicated that walking dogs and playing with their dogs in the park was a popular activity back in 2007. In 2016, the Parks and Rec Commission kind of kicked off an effort to develop the dog park. They did, there was an online survey done. They hired a consultant to analyze three potential sites. There are some preliminary designs sketched up, some preliminary cost estimates created, and that was all done in 2016 and 2017. There was a bit of a pause, and then, but just this year, it kicked back into gear. And the most recent activity was just earlier this month, which I mentioned earlier, the Town Council had reviewed the various documents, and certainly the Parks and Rec Commission met numerous times as well, as you can see in the staff report. And then at the October 1 council meeting, council directed staff to bring this current proposal to you for your review, and again, as a design review application and also a conditional use permit application. I'm giving you a little bit more detail of the project description. Approximately a third of an acre in size. It's proposed to be delineated with a four-foot chain link, black vinyl-coated fence, double gates at the entryway to allow people to safely come and go and not allow dogs to dart out. These are all pretty common features in all dog parks that I've visited throughout the county and Sonoma County as well. Benches, water, and doggie bag dispenser, and also this ADA, this gray area is an ADA paved entrance, so accessibility issues will be addressed. The ADA path and the ADA parking is just south of the community center, I'm sorry, just north of the community center where the existing ADA parking spaces are located. And the path as it exists today is in good shape. The Public Works Department is here, and there are some spots that they're going to want to patch and improve, but the path of travel exists today and will continue to exist. And again, like I said, this gray area here, there'll be some minor grading to make that ADA accessible. The rules of the dog park, I've listed some various examples of rules, but it's been decided that the rules of the dog park will be determined by Parks and Rec staff and with the input of the commission. They are certainly, as the email writer mentions, that they're interested in your feedback, but in the end, they will be making those decisions. We did proposed hours, and this was discussed at various meetings, and the hours that were proposed, again, based on a number of different other dog parks, are more or less the summer, June to September, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and the other parts of the year, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., allowing, again, and considering neighbors in various locations to minimize noise impacts, but also give people time, especially in the summer months after work, to utilize the dog park. In terms of neighborhood outreach, since 2016, like I said, there have been numerous public hearings by both the Parks and Recreation Commission and the Town Council. All those meetings were publicly noticed. Town Council and Planning Commission meetings were noticed, as this one was, with a 300-foot radius, a reader board in front of the community center, and the town website. Staff, I personally met with one of the residents on Mohawk Avenue who expressed some concern at the October 1 Town Council meeting. She and I met at the site, and we talked over various issues, and so I think that was, led to some good dialogue. Again, the entitlements that are being requested are designer view and conditional use permit, and there's an attached resolution which outlines all of the findings for both entitlements, and with that, staff recommends approval of the attached resolution. And I have, and findings are listed here if you want to look at the findings on the screen as well.
Thank you, Mr. Boyle.
Thank you.
Who has questions for Mr. Boyle? Ms. Metcalfe?
I just had a comment. I know in 2007, there was a survey done, but when I moved to Corder Madera in 2001, the first city council meeting I attended, a dog park was on the agenda, or at least was brought up by people from the audience. This has been going on for a very long time, and since I had been on the College of Marin Board for over 20 years, that issue had come up at the College of Marin about dogs on campus unleashed and running around, and I felt like this was deja vu all over again, sitting at that meeting. But it's an issue that comes up all the time, and I think it works if it's done right.
Any other questions for Mr. Boyle or staff? No? Okay. Margaret?
Is this exclusively for dogs?
Is your microphone on, please?
It's exclusively for dogs.
Yes, that is correct. And again, that is one of the rules that we could articulate and have written in in the rules that, for dogs only.
And is there any signage involved?
There will be signage, and there will be signage posting the hours and the rules.
Okay. Let me ask you this, out of curiosity, what other animals would you entertain? Excellent question.
Well, I have seen people have cats on leash, and people have birds, and people have goats or chickens.
Probably pigs.
They're all, you know.
Goat would keep the grass cut down.
You know what? In Marin County, I wouldn't, I'd pass anyone to try another animal in the dog park.
I can't resist. It portends of a "dog me too" movement.
There you go.
Anyway, all right. Charles?
So we're discriminating right off the bat.
So we've dealt with this at SFO, and we call them animal relief areas because there are a lot of different therapy animals that people do use and bring on planes. And so we very inclusively change the naming from dog to animal, and there's a lot of different service animals also, so you might want to seriously consider it.
Okay. Any questions for staff here on this?
Yeah. One, is this, so is this current design that's being shown, is this a self-perform within the town or the Parks and Rec, or is this from a designer, landscape designer, or part, like, where's the source of the design information coming from?
The source of the design is from Parks and, I'm sorry, the Public Works Department, and there's also input from a member of the Parks and Rec Commission.
Okay. So in our evaluation, are we also able to evaluate whether it meets all the general necessities and needs to do that type of use in this? For example, I think the nearest toilet that would be publicly accessible during those times is the rec center in the lobby. Is that correct?
The dog owners.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Because there's other parts where there's been new things added, but ultimately, the infrastructure to support it has almost temporary status, right? And so would that be appropriate in this location where, you know, people like to spend a lot of time in these parks? So there's some other things, I could talk about it later because it's not really questions. The other one is, is there a donor program to help sponsor it and improve it, or is it only town-funded?
Currently, it's only town-funded. That has been a comment that I've heard from one person talking, but currently, it's just funded through the capital improvements program, through the Public Works.
The other one is, has Parks and Recs talked about any dog programs they could add to the Parks and Recs classes and services? Has there been any discussion about the interaction with that instead of just make?
I'd have to pass you to the, a couple of the Parks and Rec Commissioners are here. Perhaps they can address that for you.
Okay. Another question I had is, why exclude water for people? Why just for the dogs and only very much addressing that?
Good question, and I'll pass that to RJ from Public Works. Can you find that now or?
I see someone approaching the podium here, so you know how to operate the microphone.
All right, can you hear me?
Okay.
So currently, our water source.
Would you identify yourself for the record, please?
Yeah, RJ Suko, Director of Public Works. Currently, we have a water source, but it's an irrigation water source. It's all potable water. We still need to do some additional testing and analysis of whether that's going to be a suitable use or not. Otherwise, we would do a direct line-in and have a more optimal water fountain, if you will. But until we do those tests, we don't want to, you know, set the stage that we're going to have a, you know, potable water fountain for everyone who goes to the park.
Right. So that would be similar to the one that's at Corder Madera Square kind of thing, and it has an RP device or something to keep backflow, right?
Yeah, backflow, and then also, yeah, just make sure that it's fresh water, you know, and fresh meaning, you know, all the water comes from the potable, you know, Marin municipal water district system, but that it's not stagnant or contaminated in any way.
Okay. Any other questions, Charles?
And then is it, as far as the water from the bowl, like, it just, there's no drainage, right? Currently planned for the park, just currently, just going to seep and dissipate?
Right, yeah. So there'd be a little bit of thought that would go into, you know, how we dispose of the water so that it doesn't get all the ground all, you know, muddy.
So the only reason also I asked is, some of the residents in their letters had expressed interest for more robust kind of water offerings in the future to help with animal maintenance and stuff like that. So if you do that type of thing, it flags all kinds of other infrastructural ads, and I didn't know if that would be later in different phases, if that could even be accommodated? Just trying to address some of the comments.
Yeah, certainly right now, you know, we just came with a very preliminary concept, and we're certainly open to, you know, models and types of fountains and all sorts of.
So that's a good point, because I didn't see it in the reading. Like, the overall premise is that this is a prototype to just start the process, but there's multiple phases where you will continually improve, make improvements in stages, right? Is that's?
Yeah, we certainly presented some different, what we call additive phases, if you will, and then that's kind of up for discussion. But certainly, you know, there's, I don't feel or I don't want to talk about how far, how much dialogue we had in those.
That was all the question. Yeah, so that's great. Thanks.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just clarity on that. I mean, the specific project in front of you is what is being considered at this point. Obviously, what we're looking at is fencing in some amenities. We are encouraging the commission to consider, obviously, the variety of amenities, but amenities appropriate for the dog park as shown here. But there could be some, you know, minor modifications to that, that at staff level we could follow up on and approve if they're not substantial changes to the plan.
Yeah, later in my discussions, I'd like to talk about some of those amenities, but not now. Thank you.
All right. And one question for you, RJ. In listening to the council meeting when people spoke about it, there was discussion about a review at a time period in the future, a stated oversight of the project. In the staff report and so forth, there's nothing in here that says, you know, one year, we will evaluate the project in some way, shape, or form. So do you have that on the agenda, or is that just to be implied because the town is responsible for the park?
You know, I don't know if that's my question to answer regarding the timeframe there.
Okay.
I could address that. It's certainly the wish of the commission, if you would like to see this formally brought back to you in a six-month period or any particular time, just like we do with other conditional use permits, you know, if it's anticipated, there may be issues. But that's something that hasn't been written in the staff report at this moment, but it would be the discussion for the commission to have.
And I will say, I mean, this is also something that, obviously, the Parks and Rec Commission themselves constantly reevaluate their, the parks and how they're functioning and so on and so forth. So I think that was the intent, was that they would be taking this back up and seeing how it's working, having, starting some conversations at the Parks and Rec Commission, you know, as they do with other facilities at Town Park, whether it's a skate park or other things. That's typically the first stop along that conversation line, and then if changes need to be made, it could be brought back. That's also consistent with why the specific rules associated with the park are being left to the Parks and Rec Commission rather than being embedded in some approval by the Planning Commission. If the hour wanted to change at some point, by an hour, we don't want to come back and have to modify a CUP here, for example. I mean, the hour, actually, we are doing the hours. But I guess the other rules associated with the dog park would think better left to the Parks and Rec Commission, allow staff and allow the commission and the public to comment through that process to make modifications there.
Gladly. Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, RJ. All right. So with that said, we will open this up to public comment. So I know there's some important people here to speak about this. So if you would step up to the microphone, I'm going to time you for three minutes. So when you want to start speaking, I'll jump up at once and we'll, so please. Who's ever going to start, please start, and people get behind so we can move along.
Wait, the microphone isn't working.
I was at the last meeting, and one thing, I don't, I was 10 minutes late here, so I might have missed it, but they were talking about grading the hill area of that property. And I'm not sure, is that in the plan, to level it off? And if so, will they be sure to plant grass there and not put shredded wood or that kind of thing? I know at the Piper Park Doggy Park, and it's rarely used, I've been there a few times with my small dog, and twice in a row, when I went there, the big dog park area was full. There were two dog walkers with, I think, 10, six or 10 dogs each, and they were all in there. And I don't want them to, I don't want to deny them a place to rest or do whatever they have to do, but I think we have to have a limit on the number of dogs each person brings in. There was also some talk of tearing down a couple of trees, and my feeling is that we need every tree there. It is very hot now, and no one's going to want to sit in the sun. It would be very nice if we had some kind of an overhang area where people could sit, because I imagine there'll be some older people there, either a couple of umbrellas or something like that. I'd like to make it attractive. The Piper Park is, they have all that shredded wood, and when the dogs run, the dust billows, and it's just no fun for anyone. Also, the small dog area is very small, and you can't throw a ball in that area. I was just trying to think if there was a way of making two elongated areas rather than one small and one where a big dog can run, but that remains to be seen. But I'm hoping we do retain the grass and a mellow atmosphere. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So David McPherson, Corder Madera Avenue and Chair Chase of Public Mission, mission to Angus. Angus is a border collie, great caries, rescue from Idaho.
Oh, yeah.
And he is very much in favor of this park. Every day, in fact, many days, twice a day, we have been using this area. So number one, it does not conflict with any other users. Number two, the grade for us is really good, because what we do is we stand at the top of the hill, toss a ball, and it gives him enough room to run. And I've got a video to show you, and the point of this video is to encourage you to make sure that the property boundaries are as large as you can make them. So the path coming from Park Madera, so when that ball's up in the air, it drops between the two trees. He catches it and just about runs into the fence, and then comes around and brings it back. So from our use as a working dog, it really can't be any shorter, and if it could be a few feet longer, that would be great. Any drainage in the swale down by the two or three trees there would be great. It's not absolutely necessary. And then I think our final point that we stressed before is that if it's at all possible, if there can be a hose bib that's part of the water that's available for the dog, so that you can hose off the dog or rinse off a dog. One of the biggest problems in Mill Valley is, it's a wonderful park, but dogs get really muddy, and there's no place to rinse them, so they get in the car. If you've came there by car, and of course, there's muddle over your car. So it'd be great if we could just have a hose bib instead of a typical control that turns on and off if it has the push button, so it gives you, you know, 15, 18 seconds of water, and it would not run, you know, no vandals could turn it on other than to push it on. You could have a short rinse. That would be great. And I, in my letter, we had a picture, but I'll go ahead and leave you with an additional picture. This is an example of a hose bib. It's made for dog parks.
Yeah, it's right here in black and white. I don't know if you can see it better in black and white.
Thank you, Dean. Who's next? Who else would like to speak about the dog park? We had some hands up in the air. I know there were more people out there that wanted to speak up.
Angus is a hard act to follow.
I know, but I think that's why we're all hesitating. I just wanted to add that I think this would be a really important addition.
Could you say your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, Becky Singer.
Okay, thank you.
I wanted to say that I think Corder Madera is a little bit limiting for dog owners in terms of public park usage. I feel like every park I walk or dog to, there's a sign right at the entrance, "Dogs aren't permitted in this park." I mean, people do it anyway. But it would be really nice to have a place like this where we aren't breaking in ordinance to go spend time with our dog. And I also think, one of the nice things about the Piper Park Dog Park is you get to meet and interact with other dog owners, and it creates a little bit of a feeling of community. And I think it'd be really nice to have something like that in Corder Madera instead of having to go to other towns to get that. That's all.
Thank you, Becky.
And I second the hose bib.
All right. Other takers? Who else is going to speak up tonight? I don't see anybody jumping up to the microphone. Okay, so we have fewer than hands raised. So we're going to close public comment unless I see somebody stand up. So we're going to go ahead, and we're going to close public comment, and we're going to bring it back up here to the dais to talk about it. So Angus? All right. Margaret, you know, we're at a point where we've got a proposed design. We have some elements to it, and if you've read the staff report, it describes pretty much what's on the screen there. So we have the findings to confirm, or things that you'd like to add or change, if anything?
Well, I, the thing that's only, I mean, I think it's a good idea, and I think it's a necessary thing for Corder Madera to have. There are enough, there's enough interest, and I like the sense of community that people have mentioned in the letter. The thing that bothers me is it seems that there's, we're being asked to approve something, and there's a lot that's left unsaid here. Kind of like, is there going to be follow-up? Is there going to be grass, or is there going to be wood shreds? Is there going to be a water source? Is there going to be drainage? Is there going to be? I'm not quite sure what we're supposed to approve. I approve of the idea, but I don't see the detail of what I'm supposed to, you know, look at exactly. So I think that if the area is designated as a dog park, if we put a fence up, you know, I think all those are good things. know, I think all those are good things, but I'm not quite sure where the park and rec piece comes in and what we're being asked to do.
All right. We'll get some quick... If you'd like, John Chase, I can fill in some of the...
Please, go ahead.
I did want to address first a couple of comments from one of the speakers. There will be minimal grading. We will not be, you know, we're grading the site. The only minimal grading that will take place will be, like I said before, in that gray area for the ADA access. The site itself is, has natural hill on the, to the left, lower left. And so drainage and this proposal is not to modify the surface at all. It's to leave the grass as is. As is mentioned in the staff report, if there is, in the winter months, if it looks like the grass is being already used, there's an option to, you know, close the dog park temporarily, like we do the soccer fields and other places. Of course, that runs the problem of people still need to exercise their dogs when it's raining, but, you know, I think that's something, again, that the park staff is going to need to manage, just like they manage the rest of the park in taking care of users, but also maintaining the facility and not, you know, having it overrun. No drainage is proposed, no modifications to the existing drainage is proposed. Like shown in the slide, there will be the dog drinking fountain and the dog bag dispensers. And as we heard public comment, there is some interest in a dog wash. And that's something we will, we will take a look at. And if that's something you want to put forward as a recommendation, then that could certainly go in as a recommendation to the, to the project. So that answers all of your questions, Commissioner Bendel. And I guess lastly, in terms of the park commission is, yes, like we said, they will see it again and will, they will develop and determine the rules. And they're looking for your input, if you have any, in the commission, in terms of what rules that you're interested in.
Well, I would think that somewhere along the edges or around there, there should be some benches built for people to sit.
There's two benches in the plan.
Yeah, propose for two benches in the plan.
Yeah.
You know, two isn't very many. And I think the idea of, I mean, I don't know what kind of water, like buildup this bib would have, this, a water bib, but I should think that would be useful for people to have if that's at all possible. I think it's a good idea. I think that the rules about dog walkers, I don't think, I think it was in the staff report, I don't think it should be used for commercial purposes. And I consider dog walking commercial purposes.
There's a limit in the ordinance.
Yeah.
Right. Okay. Any other thoughts about that? Okay. Mr. Lee?
Well, you're in luck, I have lots of thoughts. So I, you know, I'm in no means an expert, but I have designed animal relief areas for SFO, boarding area C for the Delta concourse. Some things I did, I researched at SFO, the current dog area, animal relief areas, they had outdoors and the different tactics that they used. Some concerns I have about this in the long term of it, I'm all for just the findings of doing it. I think it's great. I think it has great synergies with a lot of the commercial uses next door and with the community and the park and the engagement of that group of people and residents. I do hear about the muddiness of the turf. We had internal designers at SFO that tried real turf inside of the spaces and the urine and other, you know, basically feces over time really degrades the soil and it actually becomes an odor issue when indoors. So on a larger scale, it might not, but if it's a heavily used park, it might become a long-term condition. So there, at SFO, where there's lots of animals and they're leaving in smaller areas, we have to revert to synthetic turf. And I know there's some concerns about some of the turf sometimes getting hot and that kind of thing. But in the winter, if it's highly utilized, there are turf solutions and drainage that would help. And then maintenance-wise, you can come in, you can actually wash it all off so it doesn't, you know, create like a bacterial issue in the soil over time. But natural grass is great for the animals, but animals are incredibly aggressive, so they dig a lot. So, you know, we have to, we had to design like tabs to hold down the synthetic turf because a lot of dogs, you know, or other animals dig at it. And so eventually the grass might really become tore up and limited usage, you know, but you're talking about quite a lot of impact in that little area once it's confined and they're let loose. So I'm just kind of giving that as a word of caution about this review period. I'm not saying that we do it right away because there is a cost involved, but if it's highly utilized, that's the kind of thing you're going to deal with. The other one is the maintenance or the enforcement of some of the issues that the park might come up with. Loudness, also dogs, you know, biting each other and all these kind of things that you might want to document, the idea of a camera that actually just kind of records it at all times, just for dispute resolution. I really recommend putting a portable toilet over there because people will be there quite often and a lot of people like to sit and let their dogs run for as long as the dogs want to run. So the other thing is, is I have concern about the trees. So if you go look at the areas that I've studied, over time, the animals' urine degrades even metal panel and other things like the fence posts, even if they are plastic coated. And so I have fear that the trees over time will die and the fence will degrade. So the way that we deal with it at SFO is to use designated urinary enticement devices because the dogs are drawn to any object that sticks up a couple of feet in the air. So think about putting some intentional ones in areas where you might want to concentrate flows or they'll, they'll just pick their favorite couple of spots and then that will be heavily impacted to the point where, you know, it actually starts building up like actual material from the urine. So, yeah, the trees. So I like the idea of the dog washing. And I understand as a previous dog owner at the beach, you know, as a Santa Cruz, however, you know, whether it's applicable or affordable in the beginning to get it started, I don't know, but I definitely would like to revisit it as we move through the process. My issue with it is if it runs too long, it could be a drain on the water resources and also it could be used for true bathing, which I don't want to see a lot of dogs being publicly bathed with soap and other things in the environment. So as a temporary, at least, the other thing is, is, you know, this will have impact on the rest of the park. And part of the thing is, is we've kept dogs out of the parks because they do create poop and it doesn't always get picked up. And, you know, really the geese are a bigger problem there. But, you know, one of the things is, is even people inside that are walking around, if they just hit a landmine, you know, they're going to have it in their shoe. So, you know, lead and other, we do shoe scrapers or walk-off mats in that front area of the vestibule. Might be really helpful to, to help alleviate some of the tracking of that throughout areas and other people. And it doesn't take water to do that, but it needs to be paw-friendly. That's my couple of thoughts on that.
Charles, you've done exceedingly thoroughly well there. So Mrs. Metcalf, can you be, okay?
Nothing is easy. I mean, everything becomes this massive thing. I, and I'll preface this with, I don't own a dog. I own a pair of Siamese cats, so I don't have an ear in the water on this one. I like this idea. I like the idea that dogs need a space where they can run and play and interact with other dogs. Too many people are walking their dogs off-lead when they shouldn't, where there's signs up not to have your dog off-lead and they claim, "Well, I can control him." Well, your dog sees a squirrel or a rabbit and goes running off. And there've been a lot of complaints when it was at Ring Mountain of people having dogs loose because there is no place for dogs to go and play and be dogs. And I think this is a very positive thing. And I've been to some of the dog parks around the county and I don't see them having all these problems you brought up that are at SFO. I mean, I'm sure you...
I mean, it's the difference between tolerating it for the animals, right? And saying like, there's a certain level, but if you want it to be a really amazing, those were the additional things.
Yeah, but these are dogs who are going to play and I think it should be limited to dogs, not anything else that would be considered a service animal. Some people have used peacocks and other things. I think keep it with dogs. I mean, dogs going, you know, to an airport in a strange area and stuff, there's a whole different environment for them. I think dogs...
Let her finish.
But I just think dogs that are going to play and...
...about discrimination because they're actually assigned to animals, to the people. Legally, they have a right to have them.
They can have whatever they want at the airport. I'm talking about in our dog park. And a dog park should have dogs. I mean, I guess I'm a mean animal owner because my cat's communing with nature, is sitting in a 10-foot living room window, looking out at the redwood grove opposite my house and staring at the deer while the deer stare back at them and they, both sets of animals seem happy. I just think that we're looking at dogs, companion dogs, being able to run around, play with other dogs and stuff, off-lead. And I think it could be very simple and not a major production. I think, I don't know where you got this set of rules, Phil, that you were looking at, I guess from other dog parks. But if our Parks and Rec Commission comes up with these rules similar to these, I think we're doing fine. The only question I have, I wasn't able to tell from this, is the small dog park being created at the same time the dog park is or is that going to be added later, that separate area for small dogs?
So, no, this is, this is one dog park. There is no limit on size. There's no designation of size. And due to the ease of creating the dog park in this area and not continuing towards the east, so this, this is just the area that's proposed and for all-sized dogs.
Okay.
I did want to also just briefly address trees. I know in visiting other dog parks, Sausalito Dog Park has a number of trees and that can be an issue. And one way they solved, keep the dogs away from the trees, is they put round benches around the trees.
Yes.
A nice place for humans to sit and dogs unable to access, you know, get right next to the, to the trunk. So that's it.
There are ways of enclosing the tree bowls so that the dogs can't go up and use them.
Yes.
Okay.
That's, that's it.
That's your, okay. So I think that I tend to agree with Commissioner Metcalf that this can be a simple issue. We're being asked to decide whether or not we should approve the creation of a dog park. It's not a complicated issue from that standpoint. The complications rise to Wrexham Park and Public Works to deal with all of this stuff. I think in concept, this is fine. What I heard at the town council meetings was that it's, it is kind of an experiment and that's what this is. But Wrexham Park and Public Works have to oversee this. It is their baby to guide this and facilitate it and make sure that if it doesn't work, they make adjustments or this project has to be dealt with in some way if it doesn't work. But we're not going to sit here and design, I think, a dog park. Our job is to decide whether it's appropriate use in the facility there in the town. And I think we can make lots of comment that I would like to say we should then push over to Wrexham Park and Public Works to put into this. And what we would do is then enable that, that process just by saying, "We approve this creation and move forward with it." But, you know, I'm going to look at each of you and see if we can do that and put some things in their lap to decide because we're not going to be designers here. But a dog park is what the town wants.
I have one, one question.
Yes.
And it's to, to Phil. You said that you talked to somebody who had an objection and you had a good conversation. So what was that objection and what was the conversation?
The objection was regarding noise, potential noise impacts, and also regarding noise created by humans parking at Park Madera Center. Because during the plant, during the town council meeting, that was discussed early on in the meeting was to have the park and provide access to, from Park Madera Center, lower, lower right. That idea was, was nixed and put aside and this proposal was brought forward, was, the council gave direction to staff to bring this forward to you. And so there, like I said in the staff report, there is no access from the shopping center to this dog park. So the resident's concerns were alleviated when she heard that, or that helped her concerns. And I, we talked about policing and, you know, hours of operation. And she expressed, you know, concern that she wanted to make sure, you know, park and rec staff and if need be, central police, you know, police the situation. We also talked about that these, these parks are often self-policed because the people who use them want them to be in good shape. They don't want them to be shut down. And so there's an element of self-policing that takes place as well. I did invite her to tonight, but I don't think she's attended, so hopefully that's a, a good sign.
Good. Thank you.
We'll see.
With that said, I notice here in section three of the conditional use permit findings, there's a section on noise that is discussing that the current noise level cannot be higher than 65 dB. It's page three of the...
Yeah, okay. I see it.
So just for the record, at 7:15 on a weekday morning, I went over there, parked behind Park Madera, and there was a leaf blower in operation at 7:15. And I was about 100 feet from that leaf blower and my sound meter registered 65 dB. And I, I thought, you know, that's pretty remarkable. It sort of faded into the noise of traffic around, but nonetheless, I don't think that the level of noise of people and dogs will exceed 65 dB as a rule.
I think a lot of people would rather hear the dogs and the people than the leaf blowers.
Right. So in any case, that was my casual observation about it. The other thing that occurs out there is that the sprinklers come on every night and they water the grass in the area out there. And we know that it occurs religiously, almost. So we've, we've made some statements between the various commissioners here, and I think there's a couple of things that I would throw on the table for staff and Public Works to put into their administrative efforts for this. And one of the primary things is a rule sign out there that says, "These are the rules of the park," right? And that's what has to be there. But I don't see it on the sign. So they got to write the rules up and put it on there. I think that if they're going to do the drinking fountain or the water spray, they'll have to figure that out. And they can take donations in the name of Angus. That'll work. You know, the, there's no trash can pointed out there, but clearly there's going to have to be a trash can out there. So those kinds of things really fall in their realm and they're going to just have to figure it out. But for my...
Replenishing the dog bags? Or is it like donation and people bring their other, you know?
And I don't think that's our realm. I think...
No, I understand, but that's what you're getting at.
Right. And they've got to do some of that stuff. So, you know, do they need an ADA bulb out for a wheelchair to turn around in that space? These kinds of things, you know, I don't know. But, and at some point, somebody may say, "We need a light." But those things they'll have to administer. I think the dog park is good. I'll support it and I hope that the way it's written, we can approve it.
There were notes in here about being ADA accessible, so I assume that Parks and Rec and Public Works have looked into all the aspects of what is needed.
Right.
And will continue to do so, I mean, through the process. So, I mean, one, one option is to just, if you, there are particular, you know, recommendations that the commission would like to pass on specifically to the Parks and Rec Commission along with any approval, then you, that's one option. Or you may leave it to the individual sort of recommendations that have been, comments that have been made this evening by each individual commissioner as well. So it's, it's more like how, how strong do you want to make these certain recommendations, which I think it would be if you sort of add... I think it would be if you sort of had a vote with specific recommendations, maybe it gets stronger. Otherwise, you're going to have individual comments from individual commissioners. They will all guarantee, they will all, they all are being heard this evening. But, you know, it's up to you how you want to approach that.
Okay. Well, they've all got RJ's phone number, so that's all that matters. But, you know, I think Charles made some very valid points about elements of a dog park that need to be made aware of. The bollards, I don't know what you would call those things in dog...
I wrote a spec for it.
Yeah, okay. So...
Your nary enticement device. But we made it out of bronze, so it was the boot. That's our nickname for it.
So there you go. We can't get too serious about this thing. So nonetheless, I think that you've got things written down. The record speaks for itself unless somebody has something that they really want to put on as a joint statement from the commission.
I'm happy to leave it to Parks and Rec to figure out what they need and have a review on a periodic basis of how they're doing.
All right.
I would think, I agree with Margaret, but I would clarify that I think the review should be done by Parks and Rec.
Yes.
I mean, this is, they're in charge of it. We, because of land use, have it come before our commission. The Public Works has a certain role, plays in the land use. But this is basically, you know, other parks are overseen by Parks and Rec and other programs that pertain to it, and I think they should stay with them.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
In the matter of design review and conditional use permit application for a 0.37-acre off-leash dog park at the southeastern corner of Corder Madera's Town Park, 498 Tamapias Drive, file number PL 2019-0092-DRC, Comlet 0093-CUP. This would be resolution number 19-022 to be adopted on this date, October 22, 2019, with an appeal period ending on November 1, 2019.
I second.
All right. Well said, Phyllis. All right. A vote?
Commissioner Metcalf?
Aye.
I'm going out of orders and apologies, but Commissioner Chase?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
And Commissioner Bendel?
Aye.
All right. Approved by the planning commission. So we'll take a little recess here while the room goes to the dogs.
Just Commissioner Chase, just to mention this, this item can be appealed.
That's right.
Yes.
And appeals applications are at the planning department, and an individual has 10 days from today to file such an appeal.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would like to congratulate Pat Travaccio, who may not be here, who has dedicated years and years and years to finally achieving this.
Very important.
Yes. And I want to see Angus before he leaves.
For accessory dwelling unit ordinance, this is a public hearing to consider proposed zoning ordinance amendments to Chapter 18.4, which is definitions, Chapter 18.18, which is special purpose overlay district, Chapter 18.20, off-street parking and loading, and Chapter 18.31, accessory dwelling units. This has been a long road, and the state has thrown curves in that road. And here we are tonight, and Martha is going to explain it all to us. Please go ahead.
Good evening, Chairman Chase, and members of the commission and members of the public as well. Before we get going, I'd like to go over the different attachments that are included as part of your staff report. There is a draft planning commission, or a planning commission resolution recommending adoption of the ordinance to the council. There is a draft town council ordinance, which includes the various changes to the chapters that are proposed to be amended. There is the prior planning commission and town council staff reports that date back from 2016. There are the existing, Chapter 1831, which include the existing accessory dwelling unit regulations. There are the planning commission minutes from the last two meetings, the May 14th and the August 13th planning commission meetings. There's the copy of an overview of the different pieces of legislation that the governor just signed in October. There are the definitions that are included in the ordinance. And lastly, there are three public comments that the town received in regards to limiting the number of ADUs in the Hidden Valley neighborhood. So this is an item that has been discussed at several meetings in the past three years. And in 2016, the town made substantial changes to the ordinance based on legislation that had been approved at that time. And more recently, in May 14, 2019, and August 13, 2019, the planning commission discussed potential amendments to the ordinance. And this evening, the planning commission will be considering proposed amendments to Chapter 1804, 1818, 1820, and 1831. And given the extent of the changes to the ADU ordinance, the existing chapter would be repealed and replaced with a new ordinance. As I mentioned, the governor recently signed some legislation that required additional changes to the ordinance from the last time that we discussed this item. The governor signed a total of 18 bills designed to remove barriers and to boost housing production in the state. And of those bills, six of them were related to accessory dwelling units. And these are the changes that we were required to make to our ordinance based on those bills that were signed. So the pieces of legislation, they require that jurisdiction allow a minimum 850-square-foot one-bedroom ADU, and that it be 1,000 square feet if it includes more than one bedroom. Additionally, an agency must approve a byright 800-square-foot ADU that is at least 16 feet in height with a four-foot side yard and a four-foot rear yard setback. And this is allowed regardless of if a property owner is already at the top end of their floor area and lot coverage requirements. Additionally, a town must approve both an ADU and a JADU for each parcel that includes an existing or proposed single-family dwelling. And also, ADUs are now allowed on parcels that include a multifamily building. The changes also preclude an agency from requiring an owner occupancy requirement for either the primary residence or the ADU or JADU. And also, towns can no longer require that off-street parking be replaced in instances where a garage is demolished or converted to an ADU. So this is a big change. The changes that we're proposing are broken into three different categories. The first are changes necessary to comply with current state law. The next are changes to clarify existing regulations. And lastly, are changes to existing policy to reflect the town's ADU goals. Now, these changes to comply with state law, we've discussed at the prior commission meetings. The first one is to create a separate process when an ADU is located within an existing structure. So it creates two different processes. The first is if it's within an existing structure, then you apply for a building permit, and it's reviewed ministerially. If it is an ADU that's either attached or detached and adding square footage, then it would be an ADU permit. And as part of that process, there's a noticing period that gets sent to all individuals within 300 feet. And for both of these, the town is evaluating to make sure that the ADU meets the standards of the ordinance. The next is the change to parking. It would modify the parking standard from one parking space per bedroom to one parking space. And the third change is regards to architectural compatibility. The proposed ordinance removes existing design standards that cannot be determined objectively and adds objective standards instead, such as height, size, lighting, windows, landscape, and parking. Now, I've included the text of the proposed window standard, and we've talked about this at the last meeting. And this becomes even more important since the state law allows ADUs to be within four feet of side and rear property lines. So this would require that any window that faces an adjacent either side or rear property line that's located within 15 feet of that property line be clear story. And we have included an opportunity for a homeowner to apply for a discretionary design review or to obtain approval from the homeowner of the adjacent property. And if they do that, then they could have windows other than clear story. These changes were all necessary based on the legislation that the governor signed. Again, a deed restriction is no longer, can no longer be required, and both the primary residence and the ADU may be rented. The ordinance still does preclude rentals of ADUs less than 30 days. So that is something that we can still require. It also allows for an 800-square-foot ADU. Again, this needs to be a minimum of 16 feet in height with a four-foot side yard and rear yard setback. And replacement parking can no longer be required if a garage is eliminated or converted to an ADU. And ADUs, both ADU and a JADU is permitted. I'm sorry, 16. Mac, yes, you can go higher. So these are changes to clarify existing regulations. Several new definitions are proposed to be added, which include an ADU attached, ADU detached, ADU interior, efficiency kitchen, kitchen, existing structure, and public transit. The changes also define an existing structure in the Christmas Tree Hill overlay district. And the Christmas Tree Hill overlay district limits the number of ADUs in general. And so currently, the state makes a distinction between an ADU converted from existing space versus an ADU that's either an attached or detached ADU where there's new square footage being added. So the town is requiring that in addition of a new detached structure be in existence for five years before that space can be converted to an ADU. And that's to prevent a potential loophole where someone could construct an ADU or could do an addition and then convert that to an ADU. The next change is the review of the record. This modifies the current process, and it establishes an administrative review, which would be done by the town manager or his or her designee, and the decision would be final. And lastly, consistency with prior approvals. This requires an ADU to not conflict with land use entitlements previously granted. However, these could be amended. For instance, if a tree, if you had to plant trees in a certain location, you could amend to have the trees removed if you needed to put your ADU in that location. The next changes are regards to policy. So our current ordinance allows a 1,200-square-foot ADU. And we're proposing to reduce the byright size to 950 square feet or to be consistent with state law, 1,000 square feet for a two-bedroom unit. Additionally, on lots less than an acre, you could apply for a discretionary design review permit to have a 1,200, up to a 1,200-square-foot ADU. And the decision maker would be the planning commission. It would also allow a 1,200 byright ADU on lots greater than one acre. And it limits the floor area of an attached or interior ADU to 50% of the living area. And in order to do, and again, the state allows an 800-square-foot ADU. However, if you are not meeting the setbacks of the underlying zoning district, you'd be limited to an 800-square-foot ADU. So you couldn't do the 950-square-foot ADU that's allowed by right, or 1,000 if it's two bedrooms. And this shows the residential parcels between a half an acre and an acre and those that are greater than an acre. The ones in yellow are between a half acre and an acre, and there are 114 of those. And the parcels in red are greater than an acre, and there are 78 of those parcels. The next amendment is to height. Our current ordinance allows a height that's consistent with the underlying zoning district. So in the R1 district, that height can be 30 feet. The ordinance includes changing the building height for an attached or detached ADU to 16 feet, introducing the building height for an attached or detached ADU to 25 feet if the ADU is located above an existing or proposed garage. And there's also establishes a process where the height could exceed the 16 feet or the 25 feet with approval of a discretionary design review application by the planning commission. And I've included the height standard below. And one thing that was recently added was that if an ADU is located above a garage, that 50% of the floor area needs to be above the garage. So if you have an instance where it's a 400-square-foot ADU or a 400-square-foot garage, the ADU could be over that entire portion of the garage, so 400-square-foot ADU. And then if that was 50%, then another 399 square feet could be located above a portion of a house. So this is to prevent a situation where an ADU is located only above a small portion of the garage and then extends to a larger portion of the residence. And this, if the commission has input on a 50% is an appropriate threshold, we would like to get your input. And I've included some pictures of some ADUs that have been constructed in town. The first, the upper, the ones on the upper portion of the slide were converted from existing spaces. The ADU on Sausalito Street has a height of 13 feet. And then the one on the right has a height of 12 feet. The picture of the bottom is an ADU that was recently approved, and this has a height of 15 feet 6 inches. And these show pictures of ADUs over garages. The one on the upper left was an existing office that was converted to an ADU that has a height of 24 feet. The one on the right, that structure was built at the same time. There's a garage on the bottom and then the ADU on top, and the height is 22 feet 8 inches. And then on the bottom is, was a one-story home, and the ADU was added to the upper story. And in this case, the project also included adding an approximate 300-square-foot storage area in front of the existing garage. So the ADU was constructed over the storage area and also above the garage. And that has a height of 22 feet. The last policy amendment is in regards to the location of parking spaces. The picture on the upper right shows condition one, and that's where parking can be within the front setback on the driveway closest to the side property. And this is currently allowed in the current ordinance. And then the picture on the bottom right is allowing the ADU parking space to be on the existing driveway or within a driveway expansion, even if that space is located within a front setback. And so amendments are also necessary to other chapters of the zoning ordinance to ensure internal consistency with the ordinance. Chapter 1804, the definitions are being revised for accessory dwelling unit and junior accessory dwelling unit. And instead of defining that term, we reference the government code section. And this is because state law tends to change rapidly related to this topic. So if a definition is changed by the state, we do not have to amend our ordinance because it references the state code. Changes to Chapter 1818, the special purpose overlay district. Amendments are proposed to the Christmas Tree Hill overlay district. The term additional dwelling units is revised to accessory dwelling units. And it also clarifies that a new attached addition or a new detached structure must be in existence for five years before that space can be converted to an ADU. And in Chapter 1820, off-street parking and loading, currently, the ADU parking standards are referenced in Chapter 1820, and the proposed ordinance eliminates those standards and instead references Chapter 1831. And in regards to those definitions, since many of the definitions in our ordinance reference state code, we've created a handout, and that handout will be provided to members of the public when they come in with questions and also posted on the website. And staff's recommendation is to, number one, forward a recommendation of adoption of amendments to Chapters 1804, 1818, 1820, and 1831 to the town council, or make changes to the draft ordinance and forward it to the town council, or request that staff revise the draft ordinance and bring it back to the planning commission for additional review. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Martha. Well done. Phyllis?
Yes, I think it was your third, having to do with the size of an ADU. Okay. That's the one. Now, I thought we had talked about 850 square feet. I see you're now using 950. Let me just tell you the couple, and you can answer more at once because they only fit into one answer. And we talked about, I think it was 1,000 square feet as the total size. Now I'm seeing, like under number two, it can come to the planning commission and the size is not to exceed 1,200 square foot. We had amended... We had amended our, I think it was originally, a couple of years ago, 750 square feet, and we had raised it to 1,200 square feet. And we, as a group, decided we'd gone too far, even though state law allowed it. We, 1,200 square feet really didn't work the way we had expected to. And yet here I see the 1,200 square feet again. So what I'm curious about is, if the state has, it can be no larger than this and no larger than that, can we be more restrictive and go by what we have discussed informally at different times? I think even at the last meeting when we discussed this, waiting for the final laws to be approved and signed by the governor, and go back to, I guess, I still think it was 850 square feet that we talked about, and 1,000 as the max. And to go from 850 to 1,000, that there would be certain expectations we would have, kind of like the expectations of the type of things we ask for with the hotels, not the same ones, obviously, because one's commercial and one's residential, but certain things would be done or achieved to get that extra 150 square foot.
State law requires that an ordinance allow at least an 850 square foot ADU if it's one bedroom, or at least a 1,000 square foot ADU if it's two bedrooms. And at our prior discussions, we had discussed a two-tiered system and talked about doing maximum byright size of 950 square feet, I believe was what we had discussed. And then also creating a two-tier system on these larger lots, where it may be appropriate to have 1,200 square foot ADU if the lot is greater than an acre. So it was a kind of a two-tiered approach that was proposed. One, for lots less than an acre, in which the maximum size would be 950 square feet. And now we've had to increase it to 1,000 square feet for a two-bedroom based on the state law that was just passed. And then the other scenario is for these larger lots, allowing a 1,200 square foot ADU. And then also creating a discretionary review process where an applicant could apply for an ADU larger than the 950 or the 1,000 square feet on lots less than an acre. And that would come before the planning commission for design review. So if that was the case, the commission would be reviewing things like, you would need to make the findings in the design review chapter related to sunlight and privacy. So there'd be an opportunity to evaluate the project and make sure it was consistent.
But you also said, not on this particular slide, that if I'm understanding, you could have both an ADU and a J-ADU.
Correct. So that is required now based on the state.
So if you can have both the smaller unit and the larger unit, do we really want to go up to 1,200 square feet as the largest amount allowed? I think we're getting back to what we did before. In fact, you know, we did it thinking we were doing the right thing and realized after some of these ADUs that came before us that they were too large for different properties. And now we're talking about you can have two units in addition to your primary residence, and we're going back to 1,200 square feet again.
Yeah, so the 1,200 would only be if it was an acre lot, or if they had received approval of designer view from the commission.
And that was based on, really, just the conversations we had. But it's open for discussion, again, obviously during the deliberation portion of this meeting for consideration, obviously, and state laws have changed. I will say, with respect to J-ADUs, those are required to be within an existing interior bedroom of an existing house. So it's not creating new floor area as part of a J-ADU.
But you were talking about on a previous slide about their detached ADUs, attached ADUs, and interior ADUs. So an interior ADU would just be a large J-ADU, would have the full kitchen, et cetera.
Yeah, and we've seen a couple interior ADUs. It's generally the conversion of a partial basement into living space. There's been a couple of ADUs that have included that.
Okay, so the question was, what is it that's up there? And hopefully she answered your question.
She's answered the question. I mean, I like the answer, but you have to answer the question.
All right. Thank you. Charles.
Can we go to the first slide? Because I think the byright, new state definitions, sorry, it's, you said it's eight, is it 800?
It's 800.
850.
Right.
So when you say minimum of 850 for a one-bedroom, that's byright? How much you could get up to, right? But it means you could propose smaller.
Is your microphone?
You could propose a smaller unit. That's the max, like.
It's the maximum you can propose on where it's just an administrative review. And then above that, we're talking about if you want to go for something larger on these lots, it comes to the commission to approve, right? So that's really what we're getting at. So to me, the minimum is the, is the, I think that that's a little, the wording, I think it's a little more specific. That's the minima, that's the maximum square footage you get in an administrative review, right? Is that? No.
So this, the state law requires that all agencies allow at least an 850 square foot ADU. But our current proposed draft ordinance allows a byright 950 square foot ADU. However, in order to get 950 square feet, you would need to meet the setbacks and the lot coverage and the floor area of the underlying zoning. If you don't meet all of those development standards, then you're limited to 850 square feet, because the state allows you to at least have an 800 square foot ADU that needs, that can be 16 feet in height with the four-foot side and rear setback.
And these definitions, so when you reference, and when you talk about referencing the state laws as they change, is it also referring to these as like a base minimum? Because all I'm saying is these are getting very close aligned to our own ordinance. So why not just adopt the state and allow it to be whatever the state defines and not have this like 50, 100, like, because it becomes such a bigger administrative process within the town to modify it in the future if the state changes it?
That's why they are referencing the code number, and it'll always reflect the state law, no matter what happens with the state law.
No, because it's 950 instead of 850, so that it's actually different.
That's right, but 850 doesn't show up in our ordinance.
Right, so what I'm, what, like, so I'll talk about it in the deliberation, but I don't understand why we're actually giving, why we don't just, like, say the state is basically as low.
Because, sorry, if I, I think because we started this process before state law was enacted, and we came up with what we thought was appropriate for Corder Madera in terms of the size unit. So this is coming in, we didn't think it was necessary to revert to different numbers because we had been through the process where we.
But it used to be 700, and now it's getting closer to where we're at. And so we're, we are reviewing it. So I'm just asking, begging the question, like, do we want to review whether it's now more appropriate to just basically take it off the hands of the town to administrate that a different size?
That's absolutely something that could be done, but to answer the question, I think we.
You thought as staff.
Well, the commission and the, during our previous deliberations and discussions, 950 was the right size, because it was, it was based on what, you know, the approximate size of a two-bedroom unit, and that was where we went. Now, if you have a two-bedroom unit, you're, have to allow for 1,000 square feet. So I understand there's a lot of numbers out there, and it's definitely something. But to answer the question about why we left 950 in there, it's just because of previous discussions on the topic.
Right. Okay. Yeah. Okay, so then the other one is, is you wanted me to weigh in on the 50% of, with the max being 900 for the, or 850 for the garage? I don't know if this is appropriate, or you want that in the deliberation.
Is it a question, or you want to deliberate? I'm asking for questions.
Right. Okay, no, it's not a question, but it's for staff, so.
All right. What else do you want to ask? Anything else?
No, no, that was, that was the only thing I wanted to ask.
Thank you. Ms. Bandell?
So could you show that slide of the more than one acre lots? So just to clarify for me, every single one of those red lots, those are all the residential lots, or those are commercial lots, too?
Because these are all, these are all residential lots. So the red ones are lots greater than one acre, and there are a total of 78 such lots.
So each one of those lots could have a primary residential unit, an ADU, and a J-ADU?
Correct.
With no owner being present on that?
And that's, that's true of all residential lots in Corder Madera now. Each lot can have a primary residence, an ADU, and a J-ADU. The question is, what's the appropriate size?
Okay.
So, sorry, I just have one more question.
And so on Christmas Tree Hill, where somebody gets a permit to just add to their home, and then within five years could make that into an ADU and already have a J-ADU, so that would be three living units on a Christmas Tree Hill lot. Is that correct?
Yes.
I don't have any other questions.
And Christmas Tree Hill is limited to the number of units. Christmas Tree Hill is limited to the number of units that can go up there.
But not after five years?
No, no, it's in perpetuity, yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
Is it that some homes can do it, and so can?
Yeah, so there, in Christmas Tree Hill, there's a capacity district, and there's a total of 11 districts, and which each, within each district, you can have a certain number of ADUs. It's generally two to three per district. And so state law differentiates between an ADU that's converted from existing space, so that we have to approve ministerially through review of a building permit. So the purpose of creating or defining an existing structure on Christmas Tree Hill is to close a loophole where someone could do a large addition without a kitchen, or construct a poolhouse, and then convert that space to an ADU, since at that point it would be an existing space under state law that doesn't have the limitations, and we, you know, the locational controls would no longer exist.
Whether or not it falls within one of those districts.
Correct.
So that is still as a loophole.
So we had, had discussed doing a five-year period. You know, that number could be, could be modified, but that was, what we had thought was an appropriate time, that it would be a deterrent for someone if they came into the counter and asked, can I construct an ADU? And then the answer is no, because the capacity district is at its maximum number. Then, you know, if you say you have to wait five years before you can convert an addition, that's generally, we felt enough time where that would dissuade someone from doing that.
And on Christmas Tree Hill, are there any parking differences that the law allows?
No. So someone on Christmas Tree Hill could convert their garage to an ADU, and they would not be required to replace those spaces elsewhere on the lot. But, you know, parking obviously is very valuable, so that it's not likely that someone would remove their parking in an area where there's limited off-street parking.
It's, it's difficult for me to think about that, only because I sat in a town council discussion about how garbage trucks couldn't get up some of the hills, because the streets are so narrow anyway.
Right.
That's a tough one for me.
Right, I think, and I think there is limited on-street parking. They are delineated, so you, it's very strict rules about where you can and cannot park, regardless of whether there's available space or not. You're limited to those white boxes. People who are not parking in the white boxes are often ticketed. And I think the CNPA is aware of those issues for those reasons why you mentioned, whether it's a garbage truck, or a fire engine, or whatnot. Fire truck and whatnot. So at some point, it may, yeah, there may be, if parking, there's, there's not enough spaces for the demand, a vehicle would have to essentially turn around and go park at the bottom of the hill and walk up through the stairs, which may cut, you know, cut some time there.
Okay, and just one other thing. There are a number of places that the legislation has said byright. And so is it correct to assume that byright means they walk up to the counter, they say, this is my byright plan, and you have no choice?
So we are allowed to adopt objective standards, so that is something that is included in the ordinance. And then also, for attached or detached structures, it's our understanding that there would be an ADU permit that first would need to be secured. So that includes a review and then a notice to everyone within 300 feet. So there's a difference between if an ADU is converted from existing space versus if it's a new structure, either an attached ADU or detached ADU. So that would not just be a building permit.
If, yeah, if I can just try to quickly, yeah, I would say all of them are sort of byright ADUs, you know, obviously unless you're tripping one of our discretionary reviews and you're going larger. It's just that one is a ministerial process that requires a permit to be obtained from the planning department, and does have some noticing and review procedures. And the other one is, you, you don't have to do that, and you go straight to filing for a building permit. So it's, that's the interior ones, or the, you know, ADUs built within the existing structures are straight to building permit.
And when you say there are noticing, there would be noticing requirements, what would the purpose of those noticing requirements?
So it's a courtesy notice, it gets sent to everyone within 300 feet. A resident, though, could comment on the application and could, you know, evaluate what the objective standards are that an ADU is evaluated by. And if they had comments or questions, they could, you know, be provided. Okay.
Charles?
So can we go back to that slide, which we requested, which was, thank you for providing that, because I think it's useful, and what it, the one that had the actual map with the different acreage? So my, what I, what I've learned about calculating FAR is that sometimes water can affect how the total amount of applicable square footage is. So there's a couple water lots where it looks like, you know, three, eight tenths of it is actually water. So, and, so I just wondered if there was any kind of trigger that would actually lock that off and not allow them, it's actually land-based versus water, you know? Like, I don't know if there's any kind of, or if we could evaluate, like, you know, because, because I know it affects other town planning standards, so.
When we're evaluating floor area ratio, we look at the net area of land, which excludes certain, certain things such as lagoons, or water bodies, or area below a certain.
So would that affect ADU evaluation as well?
It would, because when you're, you would look, whatever the total development that's allowed is based on the net area of land. So you would subtract those areas out.
So when, if this map ultimately gets put as some kind of understanding within, I think maybe those would need to be pulled off, the ones that are over in the water just because of that? That's all. Sorry.
It would find out very quickly. So I have a question for you. Under allowance for an ADU and J-ADU on page four, it says that additionally, the proposed ordinance allows for creation of ADUs on residentially zoned parcels that include a multifamily building. What's allowed? So is that one per unit, or how is it calculated, and what is the?
So, so our ordinance references state law in this instance, because it's, it's kind of complex what's allowed as far as a multifamily building goes. But what we've determined so far is that there are certain situations where it could be interior within the building, and it's based, it's 25%. So if you had four units, then you could do one ADU. In addition, you're allowed to have two detached ADUs. And then there's also some language in the ord, the state laws about converting areas such as storage areas and boiler rooms to ADUs as well. There's no number given on how many that could be. So in this case, we're waiting for some additional guidance from HCD on what exactly is allowed on multifamily. But, you know, our initial reading is that it could be multiple ADUs, at least two detached ADUs, and most likely interior ADUs as well.
Okay. Is this a, a large hole to fly through for people, or is this just something that will be administrarily looked at and said, well, we don't have the right definition, so your application doesn't move? Or how does that get addressed? Or how do, how does that get addressed?
Well, I think that's a good question, and that's why I think there's going to be more guidance coming out from the relevant state agencies about how specifically to interpret this. And oftentimes that shakes out over multiple, you know, the first applicant comes in somewhere in some jurisdiction and then you get passed around how that's been interpreted, how to interpret that law and those provisions. So, you know, that's sort of a wait-and-see approach on that. And that, and, and just another one to be aware of as well, that HOAs also now are required to permit, or I should say cannot preclude ADUs as part of HOA agreements as well. It's, it's, so it's, it's a, that's a, typically in the past, those have been precluded through CCNRs or some other regulation, regulation on HOAs, so. But those, again, were our state laws that we would have to comply with, even though we're not necessarily specifically calling them out in our ordinance, they would, they would be still on the books as terms of state law.
So whatever the state law is, as adopted as of January one, the town must comply, even if our ordinance is out of compliance, you still have to default to state law. So in the event that there was discussion at the staff level is, if there are applications on multifamily, uh, lots, then that just defaults to state law. And it, it is a very, as Martha indicated, a very complex, if this, that, if then that. And so rather than the town trying to make that, um, less muddy, it, just our ordinance will just default to state law if you come in with an application for a multifamily unit.
We'll suffer. One more question, and Phil says something. So Assembly Bill 671 says that the local agency to include a plan that incentivizes and promotes the creation of ADU units that can be offered at affordable rent for very low, low income, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Do we have such a plan? Or are we, it says, we will require a plan. So where are we with a plan for this? Or? This is Assembly Bill 671, second paragraph, it's on page one twenty-four.
I think this relates to policies in the housing element, when that, we adopt our plans for housing in the town. I, I'm, let me, I can try to confirm that.
Right.
Right, so, so that, we will have to, when we do the next housing element, comply with this section of state law where it, we're basically, has requirements for planning for affordability in ADUs. And, uh, and, and that's what we'll do. But so it's not something that would go into an ordinance, but would go into our housing element and that, essentially a section of our general plan, yeah.
It says, it will be posted by December thirty-first, 2020. That list of incentivizations and so forth, right, okay.
And our ordinance does include a survey requirement. So we'll send out annual surveys to individuals who have ADUs. And as part of that, we'll be asking questions about the, who it's being rented to, the, what's being charged for rent, which will probably help.
Yeah, I, I think one of the, one of the things that we're seeing is that it's likely, as you all know, we've given you the annual progress reports on how we're meeting our affordability requirements for, um, low, very low and moderate income units. And, and the last couple of years, those have been exclusively really accessory dwelling units that we've counted towards that. But I think we should expect that the state's going to be looking for more evidence of that. And so that's what the survey is really intended to help us with, is to see if these units are really, um, uh, being rented at those low, very low or moderate income rates.
Well, this document also says that the Department of Housing will, would require the Department of Housing to develop a list of existing state grants and, and financial incentives. You know, that might, for people in a community, they'd say, well, gosh, there's a state grant out there. How can I get my hands on that, you know? And that might help people get into these things. So clearly, somebody had something in mind, but it's got a, there's no bear there yet, okay. Phyllis, you have another question?
Yeah. Out of curiosity, when we talked about the change in state law and the effect it can have on previous approvals, the first thing that came to mind was the preserve, in the sense, because we put a lot of restrictions that were also followed through, you know, by the town council for the approvals in allowing a rental primary to have an ADU that was also a rental. And I think there were restrictions about what happens if property is sold. I mean, it went on and on. What, that's the one that comes to mind, I'm sure there's some other stuff. What happens with the change in the law? Does all that fall by the wayside? Or does that still have, uh?
I think it's a really good, really good question. And I, frankly, I don't think we would need to do an analysis of whether or not those particular restrictions would still apply. Now, I think we can, I have no indication from the developer or anything, and we're in contact and they're moving forward with that project, that they don't intend to do so. But if it came to legally, do they have to, are they obligated to do some of those? We'd have to evaluate that and do an analysis and come to some conclusions.
I was thinking, almost opposite what you're saying then, many of the restrictions we put on it would no longer be enforced under the new law. And we've done this, you know, this is, this particular one having to do with ADUs, but we've done it with commercial properties. We put certain restrictions on. When the law changes, what happens to the restrictions you've put on if they're no longer?
It depends, again, it was-
You know, part of the law.
Well, I, I think we'd have, we have to deal with real specifics here. And so I'd, I'd look specifically, and we haven't done the analysis, but we'd, we could do an analysis on specifically what those restrictions are, how a state law changed and whether those are still applicable. I, you know, I think, for, I would, the starting point would be, they would still be applicable and still apply, and we would have expectation that they would comply with those. But I can't tell you for sure whether they, they do or not at this point.
There are some, um, state legislation that specifically has, uh, very strangely been retroactive or to a date in the past or, or urgency legislation that's adopted at a date certain as opposed to the typical default to January one. None of the current bills were urgent. None of them go into effect until January one. As Adam says, it'll be a case-by-case. But overall, in land use, generally speaking, just because there's new state law doesn't relieve the existing, uh, approved projects, built projects. It doesn't mean that those conditions aren't still enforceable. And especially, a lot of those projects were discretionary, required discretionary approval. And again, um, the ADU legislation is dramatically different in, in how it is applied to those that are by right. And a lot of the prior projects that were approved by Planning Commission with specific condition were, had discretionary components and wouldn't fall under the mandatory, uh, rules and regulations for the new ADU legislation. But as Adam, um, indicated, we have had this discussion. We think it'll be a case-by-case basis. I don't think that we can just make a general statement. But there isn't any feeling right now, based on things that we've seen, that there's like some wholesale requirement that we go back and we evaluate or relieve, um, the, the owners of, of the current restrictions, with the exception of owner occupancy and deed restrictions. We think that that, um, an owner could come in, like, uh, somebody who got an ADU last year or the year before or prior, and now they want to run out. We believe that they'll have that right under state law. We think that that is a mandatory requirement. The other thing is no deed restrictions. So there may have been, um, owners that voluntarily agreed or, um, agreed to a deed restriction, and those, the town can do a release of that restriction.
Okay, yeah, because I want to discuss the square footage, but I would like to do it after the public has a chance to speak.
Thank you all for being so patient. So we will now open it up to public comment on this matter. So, um, if you want to step up to the microphone and please tell us your thoughts about this, I would appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Mike Anderson. My wife Shelley and I live over in East Corder Madera. A small, moderate-sized house, uh, on a very quiet street, uh, single-family homes. We've lived there since ninety-two and we really like the area. It's a nice place to live, nice neighborhood. As we've been discussing, uh, current state ordinances and proposed amendments are going to allow for an ADU and a JADU per each residential parcel. And that's in a, in existing, in addition to an existing family residence. It's going to allow for, I believe, one parking space per unit. But the ADU can have more than one bedroom. So I'm doing the math on that and it seems like there's going to be a lot more parking issues in our neighborhood. It also lifts the owner occupancy requirement so that a primary residence and an ADU and a JADU can potentially all be rented out, although the rental period has to be at least thirty days or thirty-one days. There's square footage requirements, there's height and setback standards, as you've discussed. But the application process seems to be pretty straightforward and, and almost, uh, just a, just a rubber stamp kind of thing if the, if the structure is within the parameters of what the law is. And there's no opportunity really to, uh, put any feedback into that. It seems like it's a done deal. We are facing the possibility of, uh, a neighbor putting a thirty-foot addition on top of a garage that sits right in front of our front door in our bedroom. It's going to affect our privacy. It's going to affect our sunlight. We just put solar panels on our roof. It's going to affect, uh, the effectiveness of those. Our neighborhood is going to be impacted. We've got single-family homes pretty much predominantly on the street. They're going to be much denser now, the housing, there's going to be less privacy. There's going to be vertical buildup from existing homes on top of garages that I think is going to look very ugly and, and just not be something that I want to, um, really see every day. And there'll be parking, parking and traffic issues. I don't know what the town expects as far as the proliferation of new units, but the fact that there's no owner occupancy requirement for potentially three units seems to me like we're just going to multiply out, uh, someone coming in and buying a, buying a property or owns a property and leaving the area and going to leave us with, um, a lot worse living condition. I don't know what you guys, how many units are structured for a given unit. I'll, I'll let others talk.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Mike.
Inga Morrison, twenty-seven Lakeside Drive. I did not see this handout until just now. So the, in order not to, this owner occupy, is that a state law?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so, uh, there's, there's no, there's no way of circumventing corporate housing, basically, within the town, is that correct?
We can't argue with this, but we'll answer your questions after you-
Size restrictions, um, the height, top of the garages and so forth. And how many persons per square feet in a, in a rental unit? You know, I don't know that. And a lot coverage restriction, flood requirements. What about the ADUs? Do they have to be raised like new construction, six feet above where I am, for instance, at the Corder Madera Gardens? And, um, what about reassessment of the property? Does a tax ramifications mean that there's a reassessment of the whole property? And Airbnb restrictions? We currently have someone who has a house that is all Airbnb, uh, all the time. The owner is nowhere. Parking, you talked about, traffic increase. What about the infrastructure of all these, let's say, a lot of these ADUs? Sewer, school, fire, police, water? And, um, currently, um, mobile homes do not qualify in Marin County as an ADU. Will they be permitted? And, um, setback from the current home and the fence line in terms of fire danger? Where are we on that? And, um, I, I hear that you have different rules for different areas in Corder Madera. Thank you.
Thank you, Inga. Who else would like to speak, please?
Hi, Louise Brown. I live on Christmas Tree Hill with my husband Brian. I have a very specific question about Christmas Tree Hill, to be sure that I understand. But I have a general comment about the state's intent with this regulation, which is to provide more low-income housing. And it seems to me unlikely that people who are going to invest to build ADUs and junior accessory dwelling units are going to be necessarily offering those up to people at a low rent. So I think if we as a city, town, are trying to comply with that, that regulation, that we need to put something in place that requires that those units be available to people who have lower income. My specific question about Christmas Tree Hill is whether or not the number of units that, um, are currently limited, we're limited to in ADUs is going to stand. And my specific concern is that in the face of the fires that we've had in Sonoma and the North Bay and the planning that is in place right now for us to ensure that we have safe egress routes, particularly in dense areas like Christmas Tree Hill, where there is very, um, very impacted roadways and limited ways for people to get out safely in the event of a firestorm, that we not have a propagation of additional units that's going to further create hazards for people in those situations. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Bill Rose, 104 Palm Avenue. First off, I'd like to commend staff. The, uh, they've been on top of this issue from the beginning when they revised these regulations several years ago. They've monitored this, they brought this before this commission. I've spoke to this commission before. So, uh, the fact that they're here now with the new recent state legislation at this early stage is really commendable. So, um, a couple of things, some of the things that weren't mentioned tonight. The state really is superseding local authority. If you do nothing, these rules that have been mentioned tonight will be effective January first. In addition to these rules, the state has also further incentivized the development of ADUs. The fee structures have changed, they've made it more affordable. The permitting timeline has changed. The permitting, uh, process will be shortened, so these buildings can get built faster. I think the state is saying, and also if you look at the voting, you saw that there were a number of bills, I believe it was four, that were referenced. If you look at the voting, it was overwhelming as these bills went through the Assembly and the Senate. Very few no votes. So the direction is, is that ADUs are the way the state is going to address the housing crisis. And what I hope is that this commission and ultimately the council supports that. And to that end, I think what the commission and the council's role really is, is if you look at the areas where you can have an impact, where you're not being superseded, are in the, uh, objective design standards. And so that was referenced tonight, and I hope that the focus is there. To some of the concerns that I've heard tonight, I think that, uh, you know, as somebody that lives here, I have those same concerns. But I think the reality is, is that often, ADUs have been built historically without permits. This is one way to permit them, make them go through a process and, and, and come to light. In terms of parking, it is a challenge, but many people don't park in their garages. They use that for storage. They don't park where they're supposed to. So, in some ways, you could say that these rules are a little bit more strict than what Corder Madera has had in terms of going from twelve-hundred square feet down to a thousand square feet. So if you do nothing, you will have that effect. So, I have an ADU, I support ADUs. I think though they should be evaluated and regulated appropriately. The reality however is, is that the local agencies are being severely restricted in what they can do. So I hope you'll focus tonight on what you can do.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Any other takers for commentary tonight?
Daryl Snyder, I live on Enterprise Drive, east side of Corder Madera, not too far from Mike and Shelley. And, wow, you know, I'm mortified. I didn't know this was going on. I, I really am mortified. I've lived there for 45 years, single-family homes in our neighborhood. We live on one side, which allows two-story homes, on the other side is all single-level homes. And I've always felt, you know, the reason it was developed that way in the first place, so we on, on our side of the street still had some views toward Mount Tam and whatnot. I felt like, you know, no one's ever going to build on top of those single-story homes. And all of a sudden, I hear that one is being proposed and I, it concerns me greatly. Parking on our street is already an issue. There's probably, I think we have about 13 homes on that street. And I would say at least a third of those are rented out. And most of those people put all their stuff in the garage and they park in the driveway in the street. And I, it's already an issue parking there. And it's, I just think it's going to be much worse if we allow this. Not to mention, I think, the devaluation of my property if this starts happening. I don't know, I probably have other issues, but there's some of them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. We have another taker, it looks like.
My name is Shelley Anderson. I live on Enterprise Drive, Michael's wife. I'll continue where he left off. I appreciate all of the hard work that you guys have all put into this. I know that the legislation has been coming out fast and furious. I would, I agree with the man who spoke before, that you focus on what you can do. There is a lot of legislation that has taken away your power, so focus on what you can do, which is objective review, affordable housing, if that is the state mandate. Who's to say that these units are being rented? If you send out a survey, is that enough? I can tell you that the houses on my street are being rented north of $5,000 a month. That is not affordable housing. And now we're faced with not only the primary residence, but an additional unit and a JADU. Is that affordable housing? Are you, are you meeting those, those rules? Rental capacity. I'm, I'm being told that this can turn over every 30 to 31 days. What, what kind of a neighborhood is that? Where do children, where children were raised and go to school, I now have people coming in and out all the time with an absentee owner who has very deep pockets. That is not a neighborhood. That is apartment building, which I was raised in and don't want to live in anymore. So, I ask you, I, I beg you to look at what you can do to limit what the impact is on people like us who live modestly in family-oriented neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. Is that the end of our commenters? No one else tonight? All right, seeing none, then we will close the public comment section of this issue tonight and bring it back up here to the dais. But I'm going to ask Martha if she will respond to any of those questions thrown at her to address, please.
Some of the comments from the resident at Lakeside Drive. The property would be reassessed if, whenever any improvement is made. So if an individual constructed an ADU, the county does reassess and property taxes would be, would be increased. I heard some concerns related to prop, the property and the neighborhood being rented for Airbnb. The ordinance does not allow that. So, if, if that is the case, residents could let the town know and any ADU must be rented for a minimum of 30 days. In regards to mobile homes, there is a, a standard that all ADUs be on a permanent foundation. And the ADU, if it is in a floodplain, it does need to be consistent with that, that chapter of the zoning ordinance. So depending on what the elevation is, it potentially would need to be raised, however, the, the height is 16 feet for a detached structure. For the comments about Christmas Tree Hill, the, the town's current ordinance does propose to maintain the locational controls that limit the number of ADUs that are created by new floor area. So either a new attached structure or a new detached structure. Current state law prohibits us, or does not allow us to limit an ADU that's converted from existing space, so that, that will not be changing. And then one of the reasons for the proposed, creating a definition of an existing structure is to close a potential loophole where an addition or a new structure is converted to an ADU within Christmas Tree Hill. There is a question about houses being rented for upwards of 5,000. You know, ADUs, based on their size, generally they're, you know, more affordable by design because they are smaller. I have a slide I can show that shows the ADUs that have been approved in Corder Madera and they're largely a kind of conversion of existing space and then also new detached structures. So some of the ADUs are, you know, in the 300 to 500 square foot size. A structure like that would really only support one to two people max and the, a rent would be limited based on the size of the ADU. Whereas, you know, a larger ADU, that's closer to 1,200 square feet, it's quite likely that would not be as, as affordable as a, as a smaller unit. Other, was it comments about JADUs? Since the ordinance was adopted in 2017, we have not seen any applications for JADUs. There's been approximately, I think, 21 ADUs approved in addition to the ones that were included as part of the preserves project. And this map kind of shows the location of where the, the ADUs have been, have been approved in, in town so far.
Right. And I think, you know, I think, and I, not to diminish the concerns at all of some of the speakers today, because I think they are obviously important to consider. But just in terms of the number of ADUs that we've seen, while, while all of these laws seem like it's very permissive and it, they are intended to increase the number that are permitted, they've been, we've had the 1,200 square foot permit allowance since 2017, we've had, you know, complying with state laws since then, which is a ministerial by right application process. And so we, you know, we've, haven't seen, we've seen 21 since the, the last three years. You know, I think we will likely see an increase in the number of units, but, you know, I, I think it's relatively modest compared to the existing number of housing units that we have in, in Corder Madera. And again, it is, it is a way that we are meeting our housing goals as a town through our general plan requirements and, and other policies that the town council has adopted.
So we will, what does the next housing element plan do?
I think we'll, we'll start discussing that in about a year, two-year and a half, so I'd say 12, probably 18 months from now, in earnest. So, but the actual requirement for the next adoption of the next housing element is, will be the end of 2023.
23, okay. That's great. On page five of the staff report and the section "Define Existing Structures Within Christmas Tree Hill," it notes that a total of 25 ADUs for Christmas Tree Hill are allowed, were allowed. So that's, there are all those zones up there that you referenced that have or can earn more or less, but 25 for the entirety of the area.
Correct. And it was based on 10% of the number of residences on Christmas Tree Hill.
So, you know, I'll, I'll speak again, but I think that, for the moment, I, I think the understanding that we're hamstrung, as Mr. Rose suggests, is somewhat true. Planning Department will have their one hand behind their back with this. But anyway, Phyllis, I want to start with you on this issue and your thoughts about what we want to say here and if there's anything you want to add to this or where are you?
No. I, I am still concerned about the size. If you'll go back to that, it's easier if you have that up. I mean, this is not the East Coast and nobody is planning Washington DC and laying out flat rectangular lots. All lots are not created equal. An acre could be mostly vertical, with little building area, an acre can be long and narrow. I mean, each lot is individual, so why go beyond what the state asks? I would go back to the, I would use the 850 for a one-bedroom, the 1,000 for two or more bedroom units. And I would worry about number two where it says size not to exceed 1,200 square foot. We saw what happened when we allowed it. I mean, if you looked at that chart you showed of the ones that have been built, there were two that stuck me right away, one at 1195 square feet, the other at 1186. I'm not familiar with the one that's 1186. I've seen the one that's 1195 and it overpowers the whole end of the lot where it is. It's, looks like an aberration. I, it shouldn't have been allowed, but that's what we had in the ordinance and the people followed it. We opened the door, they walked in. So I would not go beyond what the state, the figure's given by the state. If you want to have something about discretion for some reason and have it, but those numbers that are going to be in that ordinance, which most people will go by, they'll know, gee, I can only have 850 square feet. Not the many that'll come and beg for, you know, 50 feet more. They're going to go by what they see when they look at the ordinance, when they're deciding whether or not to do an ADU. 850 for the one-bedroom and the 1,000 for the two-bedroom. And that's what I would support at this point. I think it's important, as I say, we saw what happened when we tried to go larger than our original ordinance, which is what, 750, Peter? Before we changed it.
Right. Well, in this case.
Was it 750 and then we went up to 1,200 when the state said they would allow it?
Right, prior to 2017.
Yeah. I, yeah, we, I, I think we all agreed that we made a mistake doing it, at least we, no, not staff, I'm talking about the commissioners, when we discussed it, we felt it had gone too far. So, that's where I stand on that. But the other things, there isn't a lot we can do. I mean, one concern I have all the time and it's whether, now we're discussing ADUs, we could, it could be anything. When we talk about height, we talk about where the base of the house is, where the base is, where it starts from and how many feet up. And lots of times, there's, it's a lot that is a hill and people decide to build at the top of the hill. So they're starting 20 feet up before they get the number of feet there, the 30 feet there are allowed, or in this case, the 16. I think in some way, we have to look at how to adjust the ordinance in a way that, you know, every 10 feet you go up from street level, so much is deducted from the total heights you can have. I think that's important. I mean, somebody here, and I mentioned view and, you know, what happens in light air, solar panels, we, and I, as I, you know, there isn't much we can do with design. But I mean, you talked about, last time, and I even questioned you about going with the clear story windows, but if it's going to be four feet, I would have, go with discretion on that. And I mean, I look for us to have discretion, but, and so the person who's going to build talks to the neighbor next door, says, oh, sure, you can have a full, you know, picture window. And then that house gets sold and somebody else buys it and is furious that they've lost the property. I think there's certain things I think should just be givens, you know, that get very black and white and other things that should be, when it comes to design, shades of gray and we have to see where we have that room in, within the shades of gray, but not lean over backwards and create shades of gray where they don't need to be done.
All right. Thank you, Phyllis. Charles, your commentary on this stuff and your thoughts about a lot of fight.
I also agree with Phyllis and I think that's why I was arguing that if we adopt a state, if, if that law ever changes, instead of having to reevaluate it, that it just is pegged to that, it's just a normal main thing. And I agree with that because that's what the entire state is granting and every town, it's fair, it's reasonable and it's decided by a larger populace than us. And then everything above that, if somebody wants to do it, they can do it through a discretionary review where we, we do have the ability to say whether they're allowed to do it or not based on other criteria. So by reducing it a little bit, I don't think we're disincentivizing it. If you look at the majority of the applications and the ones that have been done, they're under that threshold anyway. And so it'll help alleviate what, we were trying to be liberal with it to try to get the numbers up, but then we found that it causes problems at that number, so we're pulling back. The state obviously is aware of that too, as they've seen it suss out through other communities. So, I guess that's what I was getting at and it will reduce the administrative burden of this continually evolving issue. So then, the other one was, and it's a good point, the objective standards and views. So we get into that continuously. Is there a way to objectify view corridors and not allow someone to build something in the way of an obstructed Mount Tam view? Like, you know, is there a way to say, if it's water, if it's the bay, if it's a lagoon, you can't obstruct, you know, a percentage or like from, from vantage point? Like, is that, is view an objective thing? That I just need to know or the community needs to know?
Tipperon has that.
No, actually they don't, but, so, no, it's not. It's design, they have view guidelines. They have ways on which they talk about percentages, but I would be, I, I've read them. I don't see how it can, there's any way that those can be objective and not have any interpretation. It always comes down to where you're standing, where the view is taken from, and percentages are very tricky as a result. I do think, and we actually had a relatively objective, I mean, the one, if you wanted to talk about views, and, and we will be talking about views through actually a, another exercise, and how it's possible to create an objective standard. I think you would be, there, there, we, I think our prior rule said something to the effect of like, if there's any blockage, and we'd have to be very specific from where, but any blockage whatsoever, and specifically through some photo, talk about how the photos, what millimeter lens, how it's taken, that you would be prohibited from erecting that, that structure.
Right, yeah.
And so.
Abid it or would it flag a discretionary review at that point?
You can, well, and, and, and you cannot, you can't go into, you either have to permit it or not, and so it's.
But if, but if they came back and then did a ma, a major design review as, as this addition, they can't do that. That's what I'm saying is like, if they acknowledge that there's something and they can't get the by right. can't get the buy right, can they also just go through the normal planning procedures, even though it might be difficult?
Yeah, I mean, so then you're creating a more restrictive standard for an ADU than you are for, than you are for discretionary standard.
Well, it sounds like we're going to set up the same objective view standards, so, you know, for the, for the other, for the design review as well.
Not necessarily.
We're going to talk about it, though, right? Can I not hear that?
No, I'm not. There's absolutely, I mean, so it, if you, if the commission wanted to recommend we do that, we would have, we'd have to do a very, we could try to come up with something that would be, everybody could agree on, that this is both, again, the applicant and everybody else in town, that this is specifically how the rule is written and made. So I'm just, it's, I think it's very challenging, but we could, we could attempt to do that.
Okay. So, so the other one is, is the garage and whether the 50% was appropriate or not. Most garages for a single, like, you know, 400, 500 square feet with a maximum now of, you know, 850 to 1,000, so doing 50%, it seems like that peg is right in line with the same kind of square footages that ultimately would be allowed by right anyway. So I thought that was a nice balance, since you asked.
Okay. So on your discussion about the objective design standard, so that if we're trying to make it more restrictive by taking it out of an ADU application, it becomes an application for an addition to a house. Why would somebody take it out of an ADU, and they'd have to call it an addition to the house, and then they'd have to wait five years to turn it into an ADU? Is that right? Only on Christmas Tree Hill. Okay, and that doesn't apply to the rest of the town? Can we, we can't do that to the rest of the town?
This, this relates to one of the questions that we had previously from, I think it was Listen to Smith, and there's some emails in here about applying specific findings related to health and safety, where we can still potentially preclude ADU development in portions of town through extensive findings and, you know, that you would have to make and study and analysis.
That's a long public hearing process, et cetera.
Right, and then we heard, we saw the correspondence that even in that neighborhood, there were folks who actually wanted the ability to do ADUs there, so it's, you know, yes, it could be a long process of analysis.
The height measurement is, been in our documents for a long time, and it's a typical chart, it's on page 79, and the heights are measured in the same way for every portion of zoning and residential development.
In commercial.
In commercial, right, so, you know, it's all in the eye of the beholder, but the actual measurements are always the same. They do not vary. So how tall is King Kong from where you stand, you know? That's what it is. So I, you know, I don't know that we can argue with that one, because this is a good document that we've reviewed in many different applications.
Except we've questioned at times with a lot, let's say it's a hilly lot.
It's, and it's right there in the, in the drawing.
And somebody, yes, and using the drawing on the left, you imagine, I mean, it's at the top of the hill. It's up, let's say, 20 feet from the street. So they've got the 20 feet plus the 30 feet, which makes it 50 feet tall, whereas the house across street, let's say, is at a lower level than the hill, and their light is blocked. I'm not even discussing view, and I agree with you about view, but I'm talking about the light you get and all this. I mean, all of a sudden, a house is in shadow and stuff like that. I do think we have to look at this. I mean, we've brought this up in the past. Different things have come to us on an individual basis with design review. We've made people move homes further downhill. We've made people lower the height, even though the height is 30 feet. And I'm saying, if, since we're losing so much discretion, why not get it into the ordinance about for every, you know, 10 feet above street level, you deduct 10 feet, whatever. I mean, I'm not going to write the ordinance, and Adam wouldn't let me anyway, but while we have the chance to do it, because it doesn't work. As I say, we don't have level lots that are perfect rectangles, you know, they just don't exist.
So I, I agree with you that it is, is of concern, and that we've struggled with it at different locations. I think that, number one, that the requirements from the state are that we, they have a certain height requirement.
But where do we measure the height from? They don't have that written into their rules.
But we have that in there, and that's what, where the height takes off from. So our requirement for height is what, it's where it says it will be taken from.
And I'm saying it's time we changed our requirement for height.
That's a big.
And I've been saying that for two years.
That's a big effort to go and do that.
Well, I think it's about time we did it, as we're seeing we're more and more restricted in what we're able to do, you know, what our discretion is. And I think it's important, as we're going to see, you know, somebody with the garage that is, you know, uphill, 20 feet from where the street is, is then going to add another, what is it, 20 feet, 22 feet, whatever the figure, it's not on that slide. I mean, this is what we're going to have to look at. If we're going to be tied into these new numbers from the state, we have to see what we can have discretion with, and we can have discretion with taking a look at where we measure the base from.
I, okay, I see your point about height. I think that the measurement of the base is, you're proposing is a complicated formula beyond what the drawing shows, and that would be a new approach to it. In this ordinance right now, it says additionally, the ordinance establishes a maximum height of 25 feet standard if the ADU is located above an existing or proposed garage. So that's what I hear you saying you want to take issue with, is that element of this that is not state mandated, it's the 25-foot.
I'm looking at how high the base of the garage is from the street, so how high the garage is to begin with, and then how, before we add the 25 feet or whatever.
I understand that's your point, but we have to decide, this is the section we're talking about, and that's.
But we have no discretion on this.
We do.
Of 25 feet.
Yes, we do.
Yes.
Oh, we do?
Yes.
It's the 16-feet height, go ahead, Ben.
All right. And I think, I mean, we've had this discussion, and I understand that sort of the state law has put a wrinkle on this, but I think as a fundamental policy, we're talking about, are we trying to encourage the production of ADUs? And I think if we want to go back and have that discussion, we've had many of those discussions over this last series of meetings, as what, really the purpose and what we're trying to accomplish here, and based on what we've seen being developed over the last several years. There are more and more restrictions we can place and put in place on objective design criteria, that, that's absolutely there. We've, as you do that, you, the policy and the ability to create ADUs becomes more constrained. And so clearly, we've, we have the rule in there about 25 feet for, over a garage, because those are the type of units that we've seen being developed in the last several years. These are the units, these are the traditional granny units. Those are things that have apparently been something that has been useful to homeowners. They've wanted to build those. They have rarely caused issues in the past, I would say, from the perspective of fitting in or character or whatnot. So that said, that is something that is completely, we can get rid of that requirement to allow people to build ADUs over their garages. There's nothing that the state says that we have to allow that. I know other ordinances, basically the only ordinance in height is that you have a 16-foot requirement now for an 800-square-foot ADU. You know, so, so there is a, there's, I think, if to back up a little bit and see what, what is really trying to be achieved here, and what is the policy that the, that the commission really wants to recommend to the town council in terms of an ADU policy in housing, and then what are we trying to encourage here? Are we trying to, you know, be more restrictive, or be, encourage the type of development that can add housing units, but without changing, you know, the fundamental character of neighborhoods? And so I think that's a, we're trying to find that balance. I understand it's not easy, but that that's totally a discretion of what, of whether you want to allow ADU units above a garage.
Now, you're saying it's six, the ADU would be 16 feet over the height of the garage.
No, 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 ma, total maximum of 25 feet.
Of the garage.
And the ADU.
So you're assuming that the garage would be about nine feet, if, if it was 16 feet for the ADU.
I think we have some photos, we can put the photos up again of what actual heights are of the ones that have been built above a garage.
We've got some stuff here above.
Here, these are examples, right here.
Yeah, you've got one that's 30 feet, one that's 25, 6, 22, 8, 19.
Here's, here's some examples on this one.
So all of these, these examples are below the standard currently proposed of 25 feet, and that 25 feet is the overall height of the structure, so it includes the garage and then also the ADU located, located above. And the reference to the 16 feet is that's what the, the state law requires minimum height be in our ordinance, so we can't create a standard less than 16 feet in height.
Okay, but as I say, I'm looking here on page 79, with 21 Edison Avenue, the height, the total height is 30 feet.
Correct, so that would not, yeah, that would not be an allowable height under the proposed ordinance. And that, that ADU does include, it's a garage and then a storage area and then an ADU, so there, it could have been redesigned to be less than 30 feet, you know, if they were abiding by the proposed 25-foot height standard.
Right, and as you know, all of these districts, the actual height, maximum height permitted for, if it's not an ADU, is 30 feet.
So, can I, can I make a statement?
Okay, sure.
All right, so you said protecting the, the kind of character of the existing neighborhood, right? So we've kind of gone over that in some of the ADUs that I have seen, about whether they conform to the existing building, or a new building, or, you know, and is that an objective standard? Ultimately, if you say, hey, it's a mid-century modern shingle, and so your ADU should match it? Or is it that we allow people to do 3D-printed and new typologies of building, modular, you know, but on permanent bases, that are different and don't have the oversight? So objectively, as a town, do we want to make them conform to the existing base building, single-family home, or whatever's on that residence already? Or do we want to allow experimentation with these smaller units? I personally, even though I bring it up and probably have, like, litified, I would like to see the experimentation, because some of the new building structures are cool, they're going to help us get to Mars or whatever, right, like the 3D printing? But like, you know, I think this community cares about that, and we care about the character and the nature of the, how we all intermix, and so it's something I think objectively we really can define, so.
Right, and we did have that as an objective standard, actually, we currently have that as an objective standard, that it has to match, and that's the language that's used. So that means, if we're, if staff is looking at that without any discretion, it has to match exactly the color, you know, in every way, the single-family primary residence on that lot.
Okay, so just for broader discussion, that does, that does dissuade a certain amount of affordable ADU production, right? Because there are a lot of manufacturers that do ADUs that have their typical, you know, off-the-shelf, factory-approved and permitted structures that they bring out that they can't modify to match the existing, right? It's fine, I'm just saying, like, that's the kind of policies that are already enabled that do control it to a certain degree, that is objective, that is protecting the town's character. So, you know, we could revert that if ultimately we wanted to support even more ADU production. So, you know, there are, there are things there that are protecting, and I think people should be aware of.
They, they, they're not allowed anymore.
So the.
So it sounded like they hadn't, just like, not allowed that, right?
The discretion is in Adam's hands.
No, I, we cannot have discretion, that's what I'm saying. So if it says match, it's, it, that means it's the identical, and if there's any difference in style and roof pitch and whatever it is, window mullions, can't do it.
It's a normal, but they could, if you want to do a 3D-printed accessory unit, you could apply through a normal process.
Correct. Presumably, you could, yes, you could apply for design review and go through.
Is it my turn?
Yes.
Thank you. Initially, I want to say I've lived in Corder Madera for more than 30 years now, and I have a feeling at the bottom of my bones that this is changing the character of our community. It just is. And, and I'm not really thrilled about it, and I understand the need for ADUs, or what the state is trying to accomplish, but I agree with Phyllis and Charles, and I think we ought to just go by, when we're changing, it needs to be what the state is mandating us to do, and no more. I also think that that loophole on Christmas Tree Hill should be increased to 10 years, not five years. I've, I'm living across the street from the largest ADU that's being built, and it's not an ADU, it's a house. And it's a house that has changed the topography of the entire hillside, because it just got graded out. And so I think part of an objective review ought to be how the ADU is going to change the lot character, or the, the grading of the lot. And I think if someone wants to change the lot itself, like, dig it out, that needs to be considered as part of the objective standards. I have a question. If someone is going to build an ADU on top of their garage, and they're coming within the height that it's supposed to be, whatever it is, and the size that it's supposed to be, and it, it comes up to the counter, the person who lives across the street and has their view blocked now because something is going up on top of the garage, when do they get to comment about that?
So they would comment as part of the courtesy notice that gets mailed. However, comments are limited to raising objections related to the objective design standards that are in the ordinance. So if there's a concern related to views, then we could have a discussion about adding an objective design standard about views. The current proposed ordinance does not include a standard related to views. We've addressed the privacy concern through the requirement for clear story windows on side and rear, so the commission may want to have a discussion related to, to, to views and.
I'm, I'm very concerned about people who don't get a chance to voice their concern about the disappearance of their view, or the devaluation of their property. I don't think it's at all equitable that a homeowner can increase the value by adding an ADU where, at the, at the cost of someone else's property value. I also, especially after driving up to that lot at the top of Christmas Tree Hill, have a huge concern about ADUs and parking on Christmas Tree Hill and the fire, firestorms and egress, and I think it's a, I think we're really, Corder Madera is really in a, has a problem to figure that out. And, and I think it's a very dangerous situation with ADUs and parking creating an even more dangerous situation. And let's see. Also, the, the, the rental of a property for, is it less than 30, 30, 30 days? I think we ought to increase. we ought to increase that if we can to three months.
Do I have to?
Is that, is that even feasible with state law?
Believe so, but we'll confirm with state, state law.
Okay.
So is that, is that something we can do or we can't?
You could make a recommendation to town council and then as part of, that we'll staff will evaluate if that's consistent with, with state law.
The other thing that I want to just say, and maybe Judith could say what she thinks about this. If someone gives up legally, if someone gives up their, I want to say God-given right to whatever the, the state is allowing them and, and asks for a design review, all we need to do is a waiver. They've waived their right to those particular privileges and they've opened themselves up to whatever design review they want to face. But all it is, is a waiver of what they have been, what really is a right. It's almost like a property right when the state has given it to us. And, and if they've waived it, then they've waived it. It's a waiver.
Well, you go ahead, Adam.
Is this in, I'm sorry, in, in relation to like the win, the window issue or?
Yeah, or there was a discussion that, that went on a few minutes ago that, that said if they wanted to develop something that was, I don't know, not inconformous with one thing, would they get to keep the things the state agreed to or gave them?
No, one other thing is, is there's, there's objective criteria and the square footage. If they can't meet those, they don't get it by right, but it doesn't mean that they can't keep trying to pursue developing their, their, their property. They can, they can go through more traditional means.
Well, that's what you say.
Right, right.
But, but they.
But if, if it's under that, you're saying can they, would they sign a waiver that basically gives away their rights underneath that threshold that the state gives so that they could open themselves up to greater scrutiny? I think that's very altruistic.
They may not do that, but.
It's a foregone conclusion.
But it's like you can't have your cake and eat it too.
No, they won't. It doesn't work that way.
Maybe we're misunderstanding or I am. So if someone decides that they want something larger than what the state law allows or what the ultimate Corder Madera regulations approved by the town that are consistent with state law, and someone decides to file a application for a design review for a larger detached unit and for whatever reason it is denied or modified and they don't want to build it, there's nothing that would then preclude them from coming in and filing an application for something that is consistent with an ADU under state law?
That's correct. That's.
That's correct.
Right.
Okay. So there's no waiver involved in giving up their, their rights.
But if it was going in the other direction, or maybe I'm not understanding it. Maybe it's not important.
In other words, if, I think what Margaret is saying, if they don't want to conform with the rules, then our rules for an ADU.
Then they're just filing an application for a new detached structure or attached square footage.
There's no conflating of the rules. They don't get to.
Right, but they don't get afterwards to call it an ADU and move out and have owner, you know, no owner occupation or.
Well, they can still convert it. They could still convert it. Go ahead.
Right. Well, then the rule that state law kicks in that it's an interior, you can make an AD, interior ADU out of any interior use. Could do that.
So sure. I mean, somebody could build in, file an application in what's left of 2019 for additional square footage on their existing primary residence.
Right.
And if it were under a discretionary approval for, you know, and come up to design review for adding square footage, and then after it's built in 2020 or 2021, they could then come back and ask under state law rules for the interior ADU conversion and then they'd add the kitchen and bathroom or what, and the walls that were required. But, so yes, the only time that we wouldn't be able to do that is there is, if council can make the findings specific for public safety in Christmas Tree Hill because of the concerns that they have already studied and established, then there is a recommendation to prohibit that kind of a conversion in either less than, you know, putting some sort of number of years. But it would be allowed elsewhere in the town.
So that would mean that we could place a delay on that conversion or ask the council to insert that?
Where?
In the rest of the town.
No.
But what would be your findings and your basis for that?
Right. So that's where we have to go down that road to do that.
So we're not saying you can or you can't. We just staff, the, the findings were very specific to Christmas Tree Hill because of the established overlay district, the established existing number of ADUs that can be developed, findings and recommendations by the fire department. And you would have to go through a very extensive process to do that if you wanted to impose that kind of, or recommend that kind of condition elsewhere in, in town.
Judith, could the state come in and overrule those that, those special districts?
So we have to, yeah. So if, if, if an ordinance, ADU ordinance gets adopted, it does now go to the state and HCD. The state will be reviewing for compliance with state law. So they, that is one, something specifically that they've enhanced or the legislature has enhanced versus prior ADU ordinances. So they are, well, it looks like they will be taking a much closer look at ordinances than they have in the past.
So they could just overrule all that?
So there's an entire process in state law that we've been reviewing and it's a multi-step process. But in so many days after council were to adopt an ordinance that goes to HCD for review, then they notify the jurisdiction after they've reviewed it, whether it, whether they believe it complies with state law. And then there is a process by which you can, you know, have a conference and a discussion with HCD for that. But ultimately, if HCD believes that a local jurisdiction has adopted a provision that's contrary to state law, they can refer the matter to the attorney general for prosecution.
Ooh, that is exciting.
At least that's how we're reading it and that's how we, we interpret it at this point is that they have added additional steps for review and whether they do it or how they do it, you know, remains to be seen. But it appears that that was in the new legislation, that there is a process for not only review, but they can certainly refer it for enforcement.
And I think this is why we, one of the reasons why we keep talking about a pretty robust study and analysis if we wanted to adopt regulations prohibiting or limiting ADUs in other areas of town.
Okay. So I want to refresh everybody that we, this is sort of under a time clock for the approval of this because we have until January 1 to adopt this thing. And in our meeting tonight, we have until 10 o'clock and then we have to decide if we're going to continue to 10:30. But one of my questions has to do with the town's ability to enforce any rules. If somebody breaks these rules in occupancy and they are renting it out as an Airbnb, what does the town have to enforce it? They have what? Taxation? What can they do to the property owner?
We have administrative citations and that's, that's mostly the, the most commonly, I think the best option at this time is to administer fines. It's, there are other penalties that we could potentially use. I mean, there are other parts of the ordinance such as we have a nuisance ordinance, we have infractions under other parts of the code. But I would, I think we'd likely be enforcing that under the administrative citation process. But, you know, Judith is well versed in this and, and there's, there's, anyways, there's a variety of different options. Some, each one has sort of, you weigh the, the benefits and costs and each one sort of needs to be tailored to the specific violation that you're actually trying to enforce.
We don't have them by a lot since by another towns.
What's that? We, so we have no, currently we have no specific short-term rental ordinance where, such as that would actually permit short-term rentals to exist in Corder Madera. Other cities have done that and, you know, where they actually create a system where there are licenses or registrations required to, and then, and then there's various enforcement activities, the same way we would, we would do those enforcement activities. You know, and so, yeah.
We just ban it outright.
It's currently not permitted in, in Corder Madera based on our, the permissive zoning language of our zoning ordinance, which, because it's not expressly permitted, it's not permitted.
Okay. So we have designed objectives, objective design standards that we can use to control.
Correct.
But this height issue is something that takes a fair amount of thought and preparation and process if we were to alter anything from where we are now.
In terms of the Commissioner Metcalf's?
Yes.
Yeah. I, I, you know, that is a several-month process in and of itself, if not more, just, just because I know there have been passed, 2007 or '09 was the last time this was changed. And it was after many conversations at that time related to height. It would have widespread implications throughout town. We'd want to have a very robust public outreach discussion about that. You know, and alternatively, I would say though, if you, if the real issue was, you know, 20, a view blockage based on something above a garage, that's a pretty easy one to address if the commission thinks that's not appropriate because 25 feet would be too high in certain circumstances. Yeah, addressing the matter of height, I think would, as a fundamental definition, we would, that would, that would be, I'd want to, you know, take, take our time and fully evaluate that and go through it.
I think it's worth the effort to do, and not tonight, obviously, to do because we're finding more and more people are staying in place and adding second stories for their own use in many areas that were built as one-story homes, you know, in the 60s or 70s or even earlier. So I think it's something we have to look at. As I say, not tonight, but at some point to take a little bit.
Okay. Well, yeah. And we could talk about scheduling that for an agenda item to discuss if that's something, the direction that the commission would want to go on.
And with that said, is that there may be some other things in the process for adding to the ordinance would be having a series of, a staff report, a series of discussion points and public hearings on it and then making a recommendation to the council. That would be the process.
Right.
Is there anything to prevent us from doing that if we adopt what we have now with any minor changes?
Other than just capacity, I mean, in terms of what, yeah.
There's nothing about the, the ordinance or the state law that would prohibit us from adding to what we would put into place or what?
No. I mean, there is, there is language just about, you know, the ordinance shall not have the effect of unreasonably restricting or prohibiting ADUs, you know, and so that's, I think that, we have to be clear, that's not the intent of what it's been trying to do.
So in the proposed ordinance standards, the development standards for the ADUs, 18.31.070, these are the standards that we're talking about. So we've got specific elements of the ADU, separate entry, kitchen, bathroom, zoning conformance, location, height, and that's where we were discussing about the height elements in here. 16 feet in height, et cetera, et cetera. The 50% of gross floor area. Bedrooms, all ADUs are limited to a maximum of two bedrooms. Size, and this is where it came down to what we'd said before. 950 square foot, that was in the last time. And then here it says 1,000 square feet. And then the next bullet point then gives the possible escalator to 1,200, just per your slide. So following.
Page 11? You're reading, you're reading page 11?
Yeah, no, 20.
It's 11, like the actual page, but it's 27.
Oh, yes. Yeah.
So then the standards are also listed as lighting, landscaping, windows, setback, floodplain, prior discretionary approvals.
And importantly, 13, I think, is another one that we added for the state law. That's, that's the one.
So that's it. And I, I don't, when I look at these things, I don't know what else we can throw in there, you know? Frankly, these are, when it, the, the conformance to architecture or design that is already in the state law says it has to conform, right? So that's not a discretionary, or it's not a standard that is up for question, right? If it, it has to conform to the architecture or the style of the building.
No, that's in our existing ordinance and it's something that we felt was not appropriate and it was restrictive if read objectively.
Okay. So that said, I, I don't know what else to add to this. The only thing that I hear Commissioner Metcalf saying is that we would change this height.
No, I'm talking about changing if you're looking on page 27 under A, less than two bedrooms to a 50 square feet.
Right.
Correct. I know that one, yeah. But then the, the one about the 25 foot, you know, the minimum is 16-foot high that it must be by state law and, and we put it in as 25 foot. So.
I don't think there's anything we can do because I'm figuring a garage is at least eight feet tall.
Yeah. You put a slope gruff on it, you're not going to get, so it's below the 30-foot typical residential allowance that some of these applications we've looked at would be allowed to go 30 foot and this is 25 foot as an ADU. So I think it's less than the normal creation of a, an addition or a structure. So, you know.
I don't think we can do anything with that, but I do think it's important that even under A on page 27, changing A, we also have to make adjustments for B, C, D, and E, which follow through like it, like in no case shall the ADU exceed 1,200 square feet. I mean, all these different things have to be adjusted if we're cutting these others back.
Did you still want to allow the discretionary review process for an ADU to exceed the, the size established in the ordinance?
I don't know. I, I want to see ADUs succeed, but 1,200 square foot is a pretty larger two-bedroom apartment. I mean, the ones at the infamous Wind Cup are much less than that and they're renting for $3,000, $4,000, and $5,000 a month. I don't think an ADU has to be 1,200 square feet. I think 1,000 square feet is a good max.
All right. So she was just asking if there was any.
And I'm saying no.
Okay.
Yeah, that is, Martha's question was in any case, do I want to see us be able to in a discretionary way increase it? And I'm saying no. I think that 1,000 square feet is more than adequate.
Okay. So then B and C would both be?
Yeah, I think we want to try to get to some.
Yes.
Consensus on those from the commission.
That's what I'm saying. These would have to be adjusted.
So, and I'm hearing the other two commissioners are also in that.
Okay.
Right? You guys do not want to go over 1,000 square feet.
Okay.
Yeah, not even said it. I think.
Yeah, not even said it, I think, if we, just whatever the state, the current state standards are, that we just, that's our, whatever that may be now and future.
Okay.
So in less than two bedrooms, what's the number, 800?
80. 80 is the state number. Now, somewhere, I don't know if it was in this little section or not, you had something in one of your pages on about not to exceed two bedrooms.
Yep.
And I don't know if that's, where, if that's in this section about size or what.
It's number five in 18.31.070, development standards.
Number five, okay.
Bottoms.
Okay, I see. It's before we got into that.
Okay. So, you know, then I would propose that we, somebody make a motion here to adopt it with those changes of 850 and 1,000 as the upper limit.
Well, I just want to ask if...
Okay, why? That's what I'm asking. Please, we're going to vote here in 30 seconds to go beyond 10 o'clock.
Well, in 18.31.060, on page 10, on number six, it said the ADU, JADU, shall not be rented for less than 30 consecutive days, and I'd like to change that to three months.
90?
90 consecutive days.
Okay.
Can we do that in this ordinance?
We'll confirm, and if we are allowed to, then...
Right.
And then, the, the Christmas Tree Hill loophole, I'd like to see that changed to 10 years rather than five. That's on page 13.
So, we have to vote consensus. So I'm going to say, I don't agree with the three months. I think one month is a flexibility that renters would want to look at, and this is going to be rental properties. So I don't agree with it. And if you are going to put a limit on it, most of the houses here lease for a year, they don't want to come up for rent. So if you're going to do it, do it right and do it for a one-year lease, which seems excessive for the kind of, you know, add, like, I could, it's restrictive to the ADU for low, low-income renters, right? Like, which is what the state's trying to incentivize. So I think it could even be challenged.
What do you think?
So that's just my opinion.
A year is okay, but not 90 days.
I don't know that a year is either. I'm just saying the houses are a year, like, and, and I think it precludes certain people and certain types of stock from, you know, being available to people.
But why would 90 days do the same?
Because usually people of lower income are, need to be more mobile to, to go where, where income is available, I guess, you know. I mean, I, you, I, it's not that I'm sussing it out, it's just this is brand-new stuff, but I, I just, have you ever heard of a 90-day lease anywhere? It's, it's a very odd request from my side.
I wasn't thinking of, I mean, Margaret is the one who said it, but I didn't even think lease at the time. I was thinking of rental. I mean, there's always ways to get out. If you have a rental agreement and so, you, you get a job opportunity, estate away or something, you get out of it. It's not like a lease.
Right, but it's usually fine, like, there's a penalty to pay, so. So I, I personally object to it. If you three all can make the findings on it, we'll move forward and put it in. The other one was about the...
Christmas Tree Hill loophole.
I don't know about that one. But I thought there was another one also, not just the 30-day, there was, there was...
Margaret was making her notes here. So Margaret, do you, what is the Christmas Tree loophole that you're, that you want the five, the 10-year thing?
Right.
So, okay. So they're going to...
So I'd also like to...
That's on page 13.
So we reviewed this last time where they came up to the, for the five years. The five years is seen by other legislation as a time for reevaluating permit values and doing new additions to homes and other conditions, and so that's why they set it as the baseline. I don't see a baseline for 10 years, and I think it's definable within other state legislation for the five years, so I would recommend keeping it.
I don't think, because Christmas Tree Hill is a special overlay district, I don't think there needs to be a basis from anywhere else. We've made our own overlay district. We've limited the number of 10% of the total number of primary residential use. There's no basis anywhere else for those kinds of numbers.
But what are you basing 10 years on?
I'm basing it on the fact that people will try to find a loophole, and five years isn't very long.
Five years is not a, nobody makes over-five-year plans. Like, I don't know, I don't...
I've lived here 30 years.
I know.
Well, so if they want to continue to add to it, though, after five years, and they're local residents, then that should be their right. Like, 10 years is just restricting people's land use for a larger, longer period. I, I just, I object to it personally. So that's my statement. If you can make the findings, please do and change it.
Hold on a second. We need to take a vote if we're going to continue here. So I need to know if we are going to continue till 10:15 or 10:30. We need a vote on this. If we're going to just finish this, we're clearly not going to get to the rest of the agenda, but I want to get to the end of this subject or not, so...
Let's say 10:30, and if we can finish sooner than that, fine.
Okay.
I need to take a restroom break.
So, so take a, a voice vote on this.
All in favor of 10:30?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So...
I need to take a restroom break. And we haven't taken a break yet. Well, we took a break, but I need to take a break.
Let's take five minutes.
Five minutes, okay. Last, we heard Margaret was proposing 90 days as a limitation on rental, no less than, and a 10-year on the Christmas Tree Hill ordinance. Was there anything else that you wanted to put on the table, Margaret?
That's it.
Okay.
Although I do agree with Phyllis that we need to talk about height at some point.
Yeah, I think that could be in your agenda for 2020.
I heard Charles say that he felt that the 30 days, or 90 days was too much, as was the 10 years, and I would agree with him. I live across from an ADU or one up the hill, and it's been rented to limousine drivers for a few weeks at a time, or to, a teacher lived in one for a summer. That was two months. You know, I just think that 30 days is truly appropriate for the short-term rental that, that really fits a lot of people, and that a 10-year limitation is fairly restrictive. You know, every year, people consider whether they're going to sell their property or not. I also, and that's my input on it, I think that 30 days is appropriate. I know that, that the planning department is going to be forcing to, forced to create an Airbnb ordinance at some point in the not-too-distant future. So that's coming. And that's why I asked about the town's ability to enforce this stuff. You know, they will be given some tools, perhaps, down the road here. So that said, go ahead.
I think we should also come up with the name of what the short-term rental, instead of just...
Short-term rentals, that's it.
Instead of naming it as a certain company, because there are definitely a lot of, yeah...
Short-term rental.
Right, so, and also, my only thing is, is platforms that can rent over 30 days but are set up to usually do shorter-term rentals might be able to do a 30-day-plus rental at whatever price is put on that as well, so.
We've seen that, yeah.
But being exclusionary based on...
Right, okay. So, right now, then, we have those three things before us. I'm in the camp with Charles on the rental and the Christmas Tree Hill issue, but I think I will accede to the square footage so that we would all be on the same page with that. Phyllis, where do you stand on the 30-day and the five-year issue?
I'm with you on that one. I think, for now, 30 days works. At some point, where, if there is a written ordinance about Airbnbs and that kind of stuff, it could take care of what's allowed or not allowed, and the five years, I think, is adequate.
Okay. So then, I would just want to point out that I think on Christmas Tree Hill, there are no more parking spaces up there. There is nothing available. They can't bring any more cars up there. They just can't, you know.
Well, first come, first served.
Yeah, well, at the risk of becoming on neighborly, right?
Well, if you work all day and you come home at 7:00, you haven't got a parking spot.
You're going to park at the bottom of the hill.
Yeah.
That's not unheard of. So...
Get your... Lucinda Smith was asking about, where does she live again?
Hidden Valley.
Hidden Valley, is it?
Correct.
Is that a problem area, too? I'm not familiar with what she is...
Top of Sausalito Street, and when you go up there...
To the backside.
Yeah, it winds around a little bit.
Is that also a problem like Christmas Tree Hill or...
Not like Christmas Tree Hill, in my opinion.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
And, and that, I've driven up there a lot, and you drive carefully, but not like Christmas Tree Hill.
Yeah, oh, Christmas Tree Hill is a nightmare.
Right. There's a couple, yeah, I mean, I've, we've, I won't say I've spent a lot of time looking at that. You know, last time we talked about, that's something the commission could consider. We have had a couple of other comments since that time. I've looked at it just from a, from the same way of driving up there, and there's a couple, a couple of differences I noticed were, once you do get from Hidden Valley, which is on the backside, there's, there's, if that's the area we're talking about. I don't know the specific geography that Lucinda was specifically mentioning, but I was looking at the backside of, once you go over the top and you have Manona, Sausalito goes down, you have Fairview, sorry, Madrona, yeah, thank you. No, I appreciate that. The, there's, there's larger lots, there's a lot less density of housing, and then when you get to the top, there, the, one of the biggest differences, there's access either up to Corder Madera Ave, although narrow road, or down to Tamil Pius Drive through Sausalito. So that's the big difference with Christmas Tree Hill. All of those streets up on the hill lead to one Redwood, right up here at the, at Redwood Drive. So it's, you know, and in case of emergency, you don't have that option. It's just, you know, it's all down. So there's a couple differences. Just, that's, again, cursory look, but...
She's brought it up before.
Correct. So I just, you know, I, I think it's not something that we see as, you know, extremely similar from Christmas Tree Hill to that area, but...
Well, these are old homes and they're narrow roads that were not built for these huge vans that every family seems to have at least one of.
Right, and so, I do think there are a couple, if I may, there are a couple other things that were raised on the objective development standards. I know Commissioner Bendel, she mentioned about grading. Theoretically, there could be a, you know, a maximum amount of cubic yards of removal of dirt or fill, or, or that's something that could possibly be there, you know. I don't know what that standard is right now and how you, you know, what the purpose of it would be other than, if it's, I guess it would be cut, it would be the maximum amount of cut, so you're disturbing the hillside.
With all these hillsides, right, it's, it's to minimize the, selecting appropriate places where you're not diminishing so much of the mountain.
Okay, so that's potentially one thing to consider. The windows, I think it would be good to make sure that the commission is...
The clear story?
Yeah, and then having the discretion to not put in a clear story if the neighbor agrees. My, the perspective on what Commissioner Metcalf mentioned would be, yes, the neighbor could move, but the new owner would buy knowing that there's a big window there. So it's, it's taken into account when...
Or the absentee owner says it's fine and the person who's renting it has a fit, yeah.
Well, but the rent, yeah.
That's a good point.
So I, you know, but it would be nice to maybe address those couple of issues, just because they were raised this evening.
I don't know quite what to, how to address the window issue, other than asking for some sort of design guideline for windows, right? What would we throw in there as a, you know, an objective standard that could be a design guideline for a window beyond what's here?
Right. I guess it was just the provision that essentially you could either go through a design review process to get a bigger window, or you could get agreeing, you know, something from your neighbor saying that that was acceptable. The same way that we actually have the fence, allowing somebody to go for a fence from six feet to eight feet, as long as the neighbor agrees, or a design review process.
And that could be handled simply by a sentence saying that any...
We get a signed, signed letter from the, from the neighbor?
Only the adjacent neighbor, though. So I'll give you an example. In Madera Gardens, they're like, you know, if you go up two stories, you can, it almost impacts two neighbors over, right? Like, I mean, some, some of, and like, you know, we've had two-story discussions, which I wasn't even allowed, like, I was recused from, but I heard the discussion that it was like adjacent corner properties because it shared multiple rear properties and that kind of thing. Like, I think a little bit more clarification about which neighbors and the adjacencies to sign off would be, would help, be helpful in understanding those conditions.
You're right, you're right, because I think I was thinking of it as the single-story structure. It's pretty obvious.
Right, yeah.
But if it is above a garage and within that distance from a side property line, it could have bigger impacts beyond the immediate, immediately adjacent neighbor on that side.
And you think state law would allow that additional provision for a, the windows?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, like we were saying, above a garage, we don't, we're not even required to have, allow ADUs above a garage. Something that we're choosing to do.
So then, a statement about the windows would be, any windows beyond this permish, permission would require a designer, a qual, would require a design review?
Or some agreement by your neighbor, and we'll specify which neighbors then.
Did you just say we're not required to allow an ADU above a garage?
Correct.
What?
You just opened up a whole...
What's that? Yeah, the garage can be converted, that's correct. So we currently allow...
So we're not required to, if someone comes in and says, "I want to build an ADU above my garage..."
Correct.
That's discretionary?
No, 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 it's, it's by, by ordinance. It's, you can, you can, the what, the only, and maybe I should, Martha chim, Martha should chime in on this, but the, the state law says that you have to allow for a 16-foot height of an ADU of a certain minimum size. It does not say you have to allow an ADU above a garage. We have historically allowed that since our first ordinance in, I think, going back to 2001, and have, even beyond that, we have conditional use permits where we've permitted that to happen. But since that became a ministerial approval process, I think it was 2001 when that ordinance was passed, it's been permitted above a garage. So I'm just, but it's not, the state does, is not mandating that aspect of our ordinance.
God, they missed something.
So, but if you allow it, but the state doesn't grant it by right, can it become a discretionary review above garages?
Should be. Will you have to follow the ADU?
I think you have to take...
If it gets up in the air.
Because then that creates the objective standard by which then concerns of the...
I think you just take it, well, I think you just have to take it out, yeah, and say it's not, it's, it's not permitted.
What? What is not permitted?
An ADU above the, like, above the garage.
Through administrative review. It could be through...
But if an ADU...
We'd have to, yeah, I don't know, that's questionable.
Adam, if an ADU by our ordinance is permitted over a garage, that ADU still has to follow the rules...
Yes.
Of the ADU that's right on the ground, on a slab.
But if it's blocking someone's view, it becomes discretionary.
No, no.
No.
We don't have that.
Can't. No, but what you are...
So it's either you allow it or you, or you don't. We were trying to limit, so what we, what we tried to, currently, I will say, currently, we have no prohibition on an ADU, second-story ADU anywhere on a, on a single-family home. You could have it over a garage, you could have it, this whole entire second-story addition, which is just an ADU. And there's, it would be a ministerial by right application.
But what I'm hearing you say is if someone, if someone came in and said, "I want to build an addition on my house, not an ADU," and I want it to be above my garage...
Correct.
It would come before the... It would come before the planning commission.
Correct.
If someone comes in and says, "I want to build an ADU above my garage," there's no.
Correct.
Does that make sense to you?
No. That's state law.
The state law rules saying they are trying to encourage the production of ADUs. And the town has also established those policies in the past to permit that as well. So as the examples that you see here, those have not gone through a discretionary review process. Those are, came in, we allow ADUs, um, and so that's the process those have followed. We have, we're trying to limit the area of where those ADUs can be placed now so that it isn't an entire second-story addition, although I think we have one example we've seen where that's occurred.
Well, there's another loophole.
It's, no, it's, it's a policy, it's a policy.
If I want to circumvent my neighbor complaining about a blockage of the view, I can walk into you, your office and say, "I want to build an ADU above my garage," and build it, and then, three months later, tear out the wall and have an addition.
It has to be a separate residence always.
You have to build stairs, a separate entrance, kitchen. It's, it's, you could, but you could, you could do that. We've never seen that.
So, so keep in mind that.
Well, I'll tell you an example. When I bought my house.
Since 2001.
There was an illegal unit above my garage. They said it was an office, but it had plumbing and everything else. And when we bought our house, I combined the two because I needed the extra room. So it worked in the opposite direction.
So one of the elements of the, the ordinance here is that it's limited to 25-foot in height and they've got to put in all those elements of an ADU, as Adam says, which is separate entry, the kitchen, all that stuff would have to go into it. And then at 25 feet, if they were going for a addition, they are allowed to apply for 30-foot. We don't have to give it to them, but they're allowed to apply for that.
What I, what I hear about her understanding is ultimately, once they build an ADU by, by the title or whatever, is, are they basically restricted to never.
Never changing it?
Going into it and turning it into square footage for the overall house.
Can't do that.
You can't, you can't, I, I just want clarification because that's what you're concerned about, so.
There's no deed restriction on it.
So theoretically, someone could have an ADU on their property and down the road decide to change that space and remove the, the ADU. However, it's, it, it seems unlikely that someone would construct an addition for the purposes of, or construct an ADU for the purposes of getting around an addition since there's a lot of cost associated with doing an ADU, the plumbing and the bathroom and the kitchen, the staircase.
Unless there was issues about planning. So that it is, that that concern is valid.
There's, there's very little expense.
So I think that it would be important.
I did it.
Just to remind everyone that the idea of an ADU, a current accessory dwelling unit, predates, goes way back as what we used to call a granny unit, a second unit, and it was called an, uh, an additional dwelling unit. It's been called a variety of things. And the town of Corte Madera has had it in their code for quite some time, historically, for decades, and supported that, and supported that in the general plan language about encouraging second units and things like that. So it has been a viable mechanism for the town long before the state has, um, stepped into, you know, the housing crisis and things like that. So when, when town staff, when we looked at the adjustments and amendments and things like that, and we've been working with the planning commission and the community for quite some time now on this series of amendments, we didn't start taking things out or starting to separate what, what was mandated by state law and what historically has been permitted by, or allowed or encouraged by, by the town of Corte Madera. You certainly can send your comments and direction to the town council to consider changes in all of the, of the terms and conditions. But again, um, there is general overall language in both you, general plan, longstanding history in Corte Madera to allow these types of units, as well as the state legislation that encourages it. And you, as Adam pointed out, you can't draft an ordinance that seems to be too restrictive to, in, in every way thwart or block. However, there are. For ADUs.
Yeah, it's pretty, I mean, but, but going back, I mean, it, it's entirely at the discretion of the town to preclude ADUs above a garage, or any portion above a certain second story.
So, or, so here's another, like, so the fear is that the ADU process is made to basically circumvent local controls and, and evaluation through a discretionary process. And it could lead to some view issues and other things, right? And then after that, after that mechanism has been utilized by a certain property owner, they can reconvert that ADU back into other square footage, it sounds like, right? So what I hear is, when you create an ADU and you use that process, you're deed restricted to keeping that property an ADU for the rest of, for, in perpetuity, right? Like, because, because you took advantages of the processes that made it.
I understand. I think, I think, and I understand those concerns and I, and I think one of the challenges is, and I agree, you're building, you're taking advantage of all these rules to build an ADU, but forcing somebody, and I'm just saying, I, I don't know of any legislation or any rules that I've seen that requires somebody, for example, to rent it out, period. It's there, all there designed to be housing, but how do we force an individual to say, "You have to."
You don't, but if you don't let them connect it to the other house.
But even if.
They have to go outside and it's like a lanai.
There's a lot of things, no, I understand, but, so, so there, that's one. You can't force someone to actually use it as housing, even though it's, all these laws are intended to use it as a housing resource. Requiring them to never modify their house, my, I think would be an extreme, as we've heard in the past in terms of deed restrictions, you'd probably, that would, that, somebody would, would likely not entertain that endeavor because you're restricting, it's putting a, a restriction on it. I would rather see the, just, just preclude it as an option. And I, there are cities that have done that. There are cities that just say it's 16 feet, single-story. I think Tiburon may have that. That's an op, that's an option. So if that's where the commission thinks they, that's, should be the policy of the town, you know, that, that's an option that's available to you. We've, you know, I, like I said, I think there's other examples where it's worked.
Can we get back to the windows after this?
Let Adam finish, yeah.
No, I, I'm done. I, I think it's, you can get into the hypotheticals of, of the worst-case scenarios. I, I think they're, they're, we haven't seen those play out that way. That can be done today and it hasn't happened since 2001 that I'm aware of.
Okay, we have to vote to go.
Up to 30 feet, yeah.
10:30 mark here. So, um, we have to vote to do that right now?
Yes. Or continue.
So.
We're going beyond?
Yeah, I'm good.
I kind of couldn't work.
So, the, in.
Yeah, it's supposed to be a unanimous decision to continue the meeting till 11:00.
Okay, let's take a vote, everybody.
Wait, on the clear story windows.
Hang on, we got to vote to go beyond 10:30.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Go to 11:00, 11:00 PM, all in favor?
Aye.
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 And maybe we don't have to go to 11:00, but let's get back to this, so.
Still see straight.
Phyllis, what is your question about windows? Do you want to bring back to this?
I would leave the windows alone in the sense that they're clear story windows, you know. We're talking here like having, saying you have to have them as a punishment. And I am thinking of the iconic Eichler Homes, the mid-century modern homes, except for the living rooms, which were floor-to-ceiling windows, were clear story windows. That's what you saw in some of the beautiful, you know, mid-century modern things, and leave it that way. Sometimes you, you give an opening and you only make a lot of trouble you don't have to have. And I just think with these things so close to, especially the sides, walls, that, you know, the sidelines, that just, they're clear story windows.
All right. So, but the question was, do we allow for a review of another window or a different window format?
No.
Beyond this?
No, I am saying, I, I am saying, if you are, you know, it gives the, the side yard just located within so much of, so many feet of the property line, they have to be the clear story windows, yes, period. And as I say, nobody cares more about design than I do. You know that. I argue all the time about design. But sometimes you've got to be practical in the sense, and clear story windows are not a punishment, they're not ugly. They've been used beautifully in designs and award-winning homes and buildings. And just go with it. Don't make more trouble for yourself than you need, or more trouble for Adam really, than he needs.
Okay, so, um, Charles, how do you feel about the window issue?
I liked the, the wording on the clear story. My, my only thing is, is if, you know, once again, like I said, if, if they build it on the second story, I think it has greater impacts than just the adjacent neighbor and it, you know, on the sides, so. But outside of that, I was, I was fine with it. I wouldn't want any more complications with the valuation.
Okay, Margaret?
I think it's fine.
Okay. So we get back to.
What is fine? The wording or keeping it as a clear story window?
Keeping it the clear story window.
As it is, right, okay.
Period.
I'm still, I'm still not, yeah, I'm still not understanding.
Leave it the way it is.
Leave it the way it is.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
You want to allow for discretionary.
Yes.
Whatever you said, Phyllis.
I wanted, not, great, I'm having trouble remembering what I, I want it to be. Clear story windows, period, and there is no discretion in changing it to other windows.
Exactly.
Thank you. Somebody agrees with me. My kids never did at least two.
And that's the rear and the side?
Yes.
You okay with that?
That's two.
So all side yard windows that have to be clear story on houses?
If located within 15 feet of the adjacent side yard.
And there's no, there's no ability for them to challenge or get permission.
Or dis却, yeah, right.
They can't get permission or no? I like the idea of the permission for the neighbor because I feel like the landowner next door is the landowner and who have, I agreed with Adam's, you know, statement that ultimately the next buyer is aware of the conditions and accepts the new conditions as is. So that's why I think that ultimately if the neighbor would sign off on it, that it should be allowed, but that's just.
Okay, let me just pose a hypothetical. So say it's a, it's a lot, say the ADU ends up at the back of a lot that's on a corner, and it's at the, it's in that piece there and there's no neighbor. And you're saying they have to have a clear story window and not, they can't have a window down at normal height?
But then the, the standard doesn't apply if the structure on the adjacent lot doesn't have.
Okay.
Yeah. So you're, so you're looking at the distance of the ADU to the property line and if it's within 15 feet of that property line. And then you're also looking at the adjacent structure on the adjacent property and if they have windows.
Got it, okay, excuse me. So then, Phyllis would remove that possibility of discretionary design review? Okay. I get it. All right, I'm good with that change.
Gee, I'm usually winning.
I, I don't know if that'll, you know, prove to be a unintended consequence. And that's what I'm thinking we're all worried about, our unintended consequences of this stuff that we suddenly find ourselves regretting what we have wrought or approved this. So grading is certainly an issue given what we've seen. You know, um, the standard ordinance in many towns is zero net, right? Cut and fill on the property. There's no change. Is that, is that appropriate, given this? Or how do you even quantify this? I wouldn't know how to start to say what's appropriate.
Right.
And what happened to 159?
I would look to a civil engineer's recommendation on hillsides, what a minor kind of excavation would be. Because I, basically, the, the fear was that it was destabilizing the hillside or that there was no, at a planning level, check on the amount and that it was basically only goes to permit to say whether they build, you know, a 60-foot wall or a 10-foot wall, as long as it held back the soil. And so, in a way, by saying, if you relocate more than three feet of soil, you know, in depth, then you're probably cutting into the hill too much and you shouldn't consider that site for an ADU, right? Like, um, and that's objective. That's putting a, a, some kind of planning level check on where you're planning on putting these things on hillsides. And that's what I heard, is a lot of hillside communities are really much more concerned about the ADUs than the, than the flatlands, but.
I think, yeah, I think if that's the direction you want, I would think there'd be a, sort of a minimum cut or, so maybe it's a maximum, maximum amount of cut that would be required. I don't think the net works because you could put the dirt somewhere else and create some landscaping or something else that would work. But I think it would be about, I, I don't know what that number frankly is. I think we have some, is it 50 cubic yard? I, I don't know that start, there's some, I know there's some triggers in the, in the code.
They start having, that's when you have to have the civil stuff on your drawings and you have to prove all the.
Yeah, I mean, there's no construct, there's not, you know, the construction gets checked and it will, that's always, you know, that, that hillside is being thoroughly reviewed by structural engineers and geotechnical engineers. So there's no concern about the stability of the hillside. What I, what I understood was more, it's a character thing of like, of, of how you're affecting lots and, and sort of a hillside character.
Yeah, because they were saying, look, these, these, these 1970s developments were really specific about the way that they laid out their, their lots and the relationship of the homes. And they cut a certain amount to grade them, right? And if you can come in and, you know, I'll, I'll give you an example. So in, in another community over on a certain drive, they built this like 60-story tall, you know, retaining wall. Is that really appropriate in a residential somewhere else just because maybe that person could or would want it? Or from a planning standpoint, can you just say, "That's not appropriate to the character of the neighborhood" and just like say, you know, "Go reevaluate your proposal." I think it's fair to do that on the hillsides and I hear a lot of the communities support that type of understanding and it's very objective. So that's my two cents.
Well, we.
It's just that threshold of what that is and.
Yeah.
Get some good research about how to establish those thresholds and making a recommendation, so, but that would be.
Well, is it, yeah, we have hillside walls and fence guidelines, which gets into maximum heights of retaining walls and such like that, but that's, you know, I, I think, I think say, I don't know, I mean, I, they're, they're probably.
Residents which can have a much greater impact, I think.
No, it's not. It's for any constructions, there are guidelines. But I think the question becomes sometimes to, to maybe reduce the impact that an ADU might have, you want to, like we see, you cut and bench into a hillside so that it's less, you know, less sort of exposed and less visible. So it's just, yeah, again, unintended consequent, you know, there's always the case for it and the case against it.
We're exploring it.
Exactly. I'm just.
So is there a way to make a, a, a review of it if there is greater than a certain amount of disturbance?
Again, I think the, these ideas of the reviews are, it just becomes, it's either allowed or it's not.
Right.
And if we want to, um, I think what, what it ends, ends up becoming is actually not, it's more of a, it's more of a variance application at some point where you're just, um, and I don't, you know, I don't, I wouldn't encourage variance applications for things that we've set policies for and standards and objective standards for. I mean, there's, then you start asking. I mean, there's, then you start asking for people getting variances for height and this and that and that. So, we don't encourage variances for floor-to-air ratio, for example. So I just, I think it's cleaner and easier, and this goes back to even the window discussion, just, it either is permitted or it's not, and you find the right standard and most of the time, you deal with it unless there's a specific instance in which you think that other discretion is necessary. I don't know.
Well, wouldn't there-
A second tier of discretion.
Wouldn't there be, have to be an engineer's report that the cut into the hill has to be-
That's not the issue.
It has to be safe. I mean-
Yeah, yeah.
It's never an issue. It's never-
Yeah, right.
So, I wonder that, you know, in many communities, we run into the standard that says you can't have more than 50% of the height of the structure buried into a hillside without a special type of permit, right? So that if you cut a diagonal line from the toe of the building to the back of the building, you cannot do more than 50% of that. If you have 50 more, more than 50% of that, then you are beyond a certain point of grading, a certain point of square footage. It's the same with the square footage calculations for any basement area and all that. You get 50% of that buried over that, then it's a basement. So, I wouldn't know of another way to quantify that. So what do you do with that piece of information? You say, if that is over 50%, then it's not allowed, or that-
Right.
Yeah.
Or, yeah, is that specifically to reduce the amount of grading activity?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm sure there's, yeah, there's probably some number we could come up again of a cut. I would, that's always information that's provided in any sort of excavation or something, that they say how much cubic yards of cut they're going to do. That there's probably some number that is the right number. I just don't, I don't know, unless Martha, do you have a suggestion on that?
Yeah. That's what I would propose, is that box structure line and a diagonal line through it and say that if it's over 50% of that bulk is buried-
So would taller, higher floor-to-floor heights get you more grading?
Less grading. Yeah. You bury it in the hill. I mean, the worst example of that is the Mill Valley wall there.
Oh, right.
You know.
Just example of everything check.
So, that's all I would propose, is to have a diagrammatic, you know, and say that-
That sounds right. That sounds good, what you're saying.
That's what's used for the definition of a basement or a above-grade floor.
That sounds like the good way to go.
And it's subjective. And I definitely heard the residents say that that's something that they're concerned about in multiple communities.
So it's, it's a, at least 50%, no more than 50% of the-
But the record show he's going to draw it right back.
No more than 50% of the volume of-
Right. The red line, you know, like so.
Of the entire structure.
Of the floor-to-ceiling. Now, you could have a roof above that, you know, a pitched roof above that. But if you have a box for a-
What if it's not a box?
Geodesic dome?
No, it's-
You want to make things difficult this time in life.
Well, you need to know how to, all right, I mean, so we may want to-
You have to put that volume back into a square and then-
Yeah, right.
850 square feet, 1,000 square feet.
All right, why don't you, maybe this, you can, do you mind if it's a recommendation and that we'll work on trying to figure out-
Definition.
What the, how to define that for the council?
All right. The only other one was the 25-foot, but I think Phyllis and I agreed that that was okay, 25-foot, you know.
Over the garage, and at some point, we should take a look at just the-
How to calculate heights?
You know, for any building standard.
All right. So-
Did you want to remove the discretionary review to allow the height to exceed those standards?
Looking at, for height, the last sentence. Red 26, red numbers 26.
Red number 26, you have-
So, when you say that, do you mean that the discretionary review is only on that topic and the rest of the ADU is not on the table?
Correct.
So really, it's a way to basically not flag a main, a minor or major design review. It's only to address one issue publicly as discretionary, which I, that's why I think-
Number four, Peter.
Adam's good about saying either allow it or don't. And I would say, we've decided 25 is pushing it, so we shouldn't really allow it above that. That would be my interpretation and understanding of the general kind of dialogue we've had.
Why would we want to allow it to be any higher? I mean, 25 feet is pretty high to begin with.
Yeah, it'd be circumstances where there's no, it's on a big lot, there's nothing around, you know, whatever it is. There's no impact, there's obviously no clear impacts.
But, Adam's question is reasonable. Should there be, should circumstances create an opportunity for discretionary review?
I can't see any circumstances that would make it, that I would want to see it taller than 25 feet.
I think these kitten parts, I think, my fear is also if you bring one discretionary item, but they'll-
You'll get the whole.
It'll open it up, and whether we tell people they're allowed to or not, it's the abilities for them to then have public review and comment. And it just sets us up for less success to represent everyone.
Okay, delete. It gives Judith another job. When they saw us.
We don't have to take a vote on this, do we?
Yeah, we do.
We're sure that we take a vote.
It's a motion.
Attachment one is the Planning Commission resolution.
Right. So we're going to do that by, by crook, so.
Resolution.
It is-
What page is the resolution?
It's going to be 17, red 17.
The Planning Commission resolution is read 11.
I'm sorry, yes, I was sitting there just about-
Red 11.
So we would make a motion to move this, a motion to be approved with the notations regarding square footage and grading and-
And height.
And windows.
Yeah, but, would you like to try to summarize?
Yeah.
Starting on, with modifications to 1831-060, paragraph six. Oh, no, we were not doing that. That's, sorry, that's the same 30 days.
Wrong page.
Modifications to 1831-070, height, removal of the last sentence in paragraph four, related to height. In paragraph six, related to size. Modification of the square footage for ADUs less than two bedrooms would be 850 square feet instead of 950 square feet. Deletion of sub-paragraph B and C of paragraph six altogether. In paragraph nine, the removal of the last sentence, related to windows, other than clear story may be allowed on the building elevation that faces such and such and such.
And B, B also.
Oh, where's B? Oh, yeah, and B as well?
Yes.
And I believe that, and then the recommendation to create an objective development standard related to the maximum amount of cut that may be permitted as expressed through a measure of how much of the structure is embedded into a hillside, be no more than 50% of that structure's volume. I think it's just- No portion of such structure.
So, that means that one of you guys will make a motion or to that effect?
So moved to what Adam just said.
All right. Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Mendel?
Yes.
Vice Chair Metcalfe?
Aye.
Chairman Chase?
Yes.
Excellent.
With that said, we will adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.